Recording has begun.
Excellent. All right. Good evening. I'm now calling the Tuesday, April 20th, 2021, regular meeting in Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to order. The time is 7:03 PM. No, that's, that threw me off there, Sarah. Please note that in support of fiscal distancing during the local public health emergency in accordance with Governor Gavin Newsom's executive order that relaxed Brown Act rules during the public health crisis, we're conducting the meeting via video conference. Because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when Commissioner staff, presenters, and the public will provide comments. If you have called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. Please practice considerate video conferencing, editing, muting your line when you are not speaking, and limiting distracted behavior while on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct roll call.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll call this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Warren.
Present.
Vice President Vaughn. Commissioner Kearney.
Here.
Commissioner Sherlock.
Present.
Commissioner Spring.
Here.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Okay, and we have six commissioners present and one absent. And also for the benefit of the recording, I will conduct a presenter's consultant and staff roll call. Zone Haven CEO Crocker.
Here, present.
Fire Safe Council CEO Shalit. Fire Safe Council Managing Director Rendler. Acting Fire Chief Glass.
Good evening.
District Consulting Engineer Tarantino. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott.
Here.
Emergency Services Manager Captain Louham.
Good evening here.
Thank you. General Manager Logan.
Here.
Lead Deputy County Counsel Chalden.
Present, thank you.
Cert Program Analyst BB.
Yeah.
And Special Project Service Consultant Hendricks.
Present.
Right, presenters, consultants, and staff are accounted for.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item two, which is the president's remarks. So, good evening, everyone. Kind of a weird weather today, spring weather. It was kind of, was beautiful, and then it got rainy at some places, and there was thunderstorms in the Bay Area. The strange, but welcome to spring, everyone. Kind of like to think that I'm sensing that there's kind of, I can see a path to when we actually can get together in person again, you know, dodo when that is, but I'm starting to get the sense that it's probably sooner than later. And so looking forward to that. That said, what I'm, what I'm really excited about tonight's agenda is is that we, we actually have some presentations in the latter part of the agenda where commissioners are actually going to engage on their portions of the strategic plan. And that's a really big shift for the organization because in years past, we had a strategic plan. There was a subcommittee that worked on it and addressed and talked about it and brought some things to the forefront, but there was no concerted plan to implement the strategic plan. And now we've actually operationalized it. And we have, we're setting up goals and milestones to actually bring those items to fruition, which is, I think for us as an organization as we grow, that's a significant change. And so I'm looking forward to hearing those presentations. And so with that, I want to again, thank the staff for pulling together, you know, an agenda, a complete agenda with a lot of good stuff, especially with Zone Haven presentation this evening. And once again, doing this all remotely, never getting to meet face to face, so that's never easy. All right, with that said, we'll move to public comment. So this is item three on the agenda. Public comment, persons wishing to address the commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussion or actions tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of speakers requires the commission president to impose a shorter time limit. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda?
Alan has his hand up.
Alan, Alan Epstein, please. Victoria, set the timer, please, and unmute Alan. Thank you. Go ahead, Alan. Alan, we can't hear you. Alan, you're in mute.
Thank you very much. Each of these Zoom meetings works differently. Apologize. My comments today I sent to those commissioners whose names and email addresses I have, some public comments. The comment that I will talk about now has to do with undergrounding. The town of Los Altos Hills is getting close to considering undergrounding some utilities adjacent to El Monte Fire Station. And I'd like the fire district to look into whether or not it could provide some support for that activity. My proposal was to suggest a 50-50 split between the town of Los Altos Hills and the fire district. You have a copy of my comments, and I won't take your time to read it to you, but that's the general concept. I'd like to ask that the fire commission undertake a study and decide whether or not it can assist in the funding of undergrounding, in particular, directly adjacent to the El Monte Fire Station, which will provide for access in the case of down wires or would eliminate the possibility of down wires, eliminate the possibility of fires being started by those wires, and assure that a emergency access route both in and out would be available. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Alan, for your comments. Are there any other public comments? All right, seeing no other comments, we will close item three. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to item four, which is the consent calendar. And changes to the order of the board of commission agenda. So what we're here is item four, which is the consent calendars items for A through four G. Are there any comments from the staff on the items A through G?
Thank you, Board President Warren. Let me just comment that I don't have any comments on the items, but I would like to say that Seth Chalet and Eugenia Render from Fire Safe Council will probably be joining us about eight o'clock tonight. So if they're not on board yet, I would just suggest that you just continue on on the agenda until they get on board. And that's the end of my remarks. Thank you. No comments on the consent calendar.
Consent calendar. Thank you. All right.
Seth is on, by the way. I see him. Okay.
Thank you.
Can I make a quick comment?
Corey, please.
Item four E, that is the property damage check that we received for Replata and Elena. It just came in today. So we have received the payment for that. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Are there any questions from the commission on items, or would any of the commissioners like to change, like to make changes to the consent calendar or the order of the agenda?
No.
No, I'm seeing none. All right, I will now entertain a motion. Will Commissioner making the, this is for to accept the consent calendar item four, or A through G. Will the Commissioner making the motion and the Commissioner seconding the motion, please state their names for the benefit of the recording.
Spring moves.
Tyson, seconds. Thank you very much. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission on the consent calendar? Is there any public comment on the consent calendar items for A through G? All right. Thank you. And hearing none. If there's no further discussion, we'll now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call.
President Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Spring.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great. Thank you very much. We will now move to item five, received presentation from Zone Haven's chief executive officer on the evacuation and notification platform used by first responders and the public safety workers due to be deployed in Santa Clara County. So this is item five. Tonight, we have the CEO and co-founder of Zone Haven, Mr. Charlie Crocker, joining us to provide a presentation. Mr. Crocker, thank you for sharing with us tonight. Please provide the presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm lucky to have Chief Glass also participating in this. We are deeply partnered with the Santa Clara County Fire District. So he's going to take the first portion of the slides, and then I will walk through the second portion. So we'll be going through kind of the overall wildfire problem, the challenges that we've had with evacuations in the past. And then I want to walk you through the real world of example of what we did at the CZU complex fire. And then depending on how much time we have left, I can show you the application itself, though you will see some of the screenshots here. So Chief Glass, are you prepared to move forward here?
Yeah, thank you very much. I did want to take the opportunity to introduce Battalion Chief Tyler Mortenson, who is on the call. He will be leading our transition and implementation of the Zone Haven product within Los Altos Hills County Fire District, as well as the Central Fire District moving forward. We did go ahead and fund this program through the Central Fire District because we felt it was of such importance. And again, we've been working on this project since before the CZU fire started. We've been in a really collaborative partnership with Charlie and his team at Zone Haven, and Tyler will be taking the lead and be making contact with the district as we move forward with evaluation of the zones within the Hills Fire District. And as we have the, begin the community outreach component. So with that, we'll go ahead and do a brief overview. This will be the second time Charlie and I presented this slide deck. We did it for the Fire Safe Council about two weeks ago. So bear with me. I'm probably a little rusty as this slide deck looks a little different than the one I was using the last time. But the challenge that we're facing now today is obviously the changing climate conditions and the wildfire problem that we are facing within Santa Clara County. This is not a unique problem here in Santa Clara County. We're seeing this throughout the state of California and honestly throughout the United States as a whole. We're taking a look at longer, drier, hotter, windier fire seasons. And again, I don't even know if that's an appropriate term anymore. I feel like just yesterday, there was a vegetation fire in Northern California that was threatening crews, and they had to evacuate from the line. So this is unprecedented fire behavior this early in the fire season. As we look at current fuel moistures within Santa Clara County, we're at August levels and near critical. So again, we are, we are primed and ready. And as President Warren alluded to, early with the spring weather, I saw blustery winds this afternoon at one point that were shocking. Again, if there would have been a fire on the ground today, it would have been off and running, depicted in the picture as you see on the upper right of the screen. Some of the other things that are changing are human behavior, how we react and respond to fire. People are more aware. People are more engaged. This is an important, important time, and we need to capitalize on this moment. But again, we have a lot of technology that we can leverage to alert, educate, warn, notify, and ultimately evacuate the citizenry that we serve and that you are charged with, you know, providing service for. So with that, I believe I touched enough on climate change. Charlie, we'll go to the next slide. You know, this slide's a little deceiving because firefighting in its initial stages is not effective when you compare it to the large scale wildfires that we see starting like CZU and SCU. As much as we're able to amass resources as early as we possibly can, and we pride ourselves on response time and delivery of service, there are just some fires that are too big for us to tackle at the initial attack phase. What we call that is extended attack, where we know the fire is going to either outpace or far exceed, exceed our ability to support resource, support it with resources, and it takes time, that lag or reactionary time for us to amass the amount of appropriate resource to begin mitigation and containment strategy around that fire. The problem is the fire is growing and spreading at a rapid pace during this time. So how does that, how do we get the notification out? How do we begin to evacuate and begin early warning for all of the folks within our jurisdictions that we're charged with protecting? Next slide. Obviously, evacuation orders. So we have evacuation warnings and evacuation orders. Those are the two agreed upon terminology that law enforcement is charged with. They have the ability to execute those. This is typically not done alone. We do this in conjunction through a unified command procedure where we would come together with local law enforcement. In this case, it would be potentially Los Altos Hills, excuse me, the Los Altos Police Department and/or the Sheriff's Office as we begin to make the decision to either implement a evacuation order or place an evacuation warning. Next slide. Obviously, I touched on the incident command system and our requirement for unified command. This is something that works really well across platform, multidisciplinary, multi-agency. Those agencies having jurisdictional authority are brought into our unified command post. They are allowed to assist with decision-making capability. And from that, we develop the plan using our ICS system, the planning P, and we work through 24-hour cycles or 12-hour cycles, depending on where the fire is and who owns the fire, to make sure that we're protecting the public and mitigating the fire problem. Next slide. One of the biggest issues that we have during evacuation is traffic. Traffic always seems to be a very big challenge for us, and the beauty of the Zone Haven product that allows us to pre-identify traffic control points, evacuation routes, and explore the options for contraflow. This is something that has to be highly coordinated, executed, and practiced. It needs intense coordination. There are some communities, and Charlie can probably speak at length about the work that's being done in Maragua Rinda, I believe, who has done some contraflow traffic drills. Again, I don't think we're at that stage yet, but it's definitely an option for us as we begin to look at major corridors within Los Altos Hills. Again, I think it's definitely something that needs to be on the table as we develop and grow our plan. Next slide. Obviously, vulnerable populations, and these are the folks that are most at risk, those with functional needs that are within our communities. And I know the Los Altos Hills County Fire District has done an amazing job of outreach through their CERT program to identify some of the folks that may need additional assistance. And again, I think that's the kind of local hyper-focused knowledge that we want to capture in the zone's creation in Los Altos Hills. This one not only serves to better the delivery of the fire service, but also helps us to identify those that we know are going to need extra time and/or extra assistance with our evacuation process. This is why we harp so much on early evacuation. We really, really want the community within our Ready, Set, Go programs to understand that when you see red flag coming, that's your chance to be ready and, and set. And then if you have an option to go, go, especially if you're one of those in a vulnerable population, or you have a functional needs and need extra time. Next slide. We don't want to end up in a situation where we have mass rescue and/or casualties to deal with on top of the fire problem that we're facing. Zone Haven gives us the ability to pre-identify the zones, the travel routes, the collection points, the TRAs. And again, Charlie will speak to that and kind of give you, showcase the ability for these plans to be developed in advance. Next slide. This slide here talks about the most devastating fires, the top 20 most destructive wildfires within the state of California. And the interesting thing here is that you go through and you take a look at the recency of all of these fires. This is a problem for this generation of fire service, this generation of fire service leadership. I look at every one of these, and these all occurred within my short career. So again, I look at this, and I look back 25 years, and I see every one of these fires has occurred during my, my time in the fire service. So again, this does, this is indicative of the challenges that we're facing with weather, where people want to build their homes, which is why we, we are taking such a proactive approach with our wild and pre-fire management wildfire resilience battalion chief, who will be on later. I look forward to introducing him during the chief's report. But again, this is a very, very high priority for the Santa Clara County Fire Department. And again, we look forward to mutual partnership of Los Altos Hills County Fire District as we roll this project out. Next slide. So we'll begin to talk about the evacuation challenges as we move through this slide deck. Again, ad hoc evacuations typically are created for each incident. So what you see on the left-hand side is not uncommon of how we have been doing business up to and including last year. And there were moments in this SCU fire where literally a map was spread out over the hood of a pickup truck, and lines were drawn with a, with a pen or a pencil by the local law enforcement and the local battalion chief. So every time you need to do this, it's a roll of the dice on the expertise, the knowledge, and the ability of that, those people in the field as they tackle the wildfire problem, and then develop a plan on the fly with limited information, and then try to communicate and then disseminate that information, not only to the public, but to those that are charged with communicating that, which is the, in Hart County, the Office of Emergency Management. They are the ones that have the ability to push that information out through the iPOS and warning systems like Everbridge and some of our other communications platforms. As opposed to, if you look on the right, you can see a well orchestrated and choreographed map that shows pre-identified zones. And again, Charlie, I'm guessing that that is either density or population density. Is that what that color is indicating on that map?
So on that, that map was done at the Kincaid Fire, and what's, what's interesting is that they did do a lot of that zone development during the actual event. But the good news for them is they had 40 hours to plan before the big wind event came. So they executed a really, a perfect evacuation of 200,000 people, but they had 40 hours to do it. When you look at the Tubbs Fire, you look at the Camp Fire, you look at the CZU Fire, there wasn't 40 hours, right? So how do we allow people to have that level of, you know, planning, but in a much shorter timeframe?
Again, this gives us the ability to get that hyper-focused local knowledge from folks within the fire districts into our zone and our planning criteria well in advance of the emergency. And it doesn't require me or Chief Mortensen, a subject matter expert, to draw on the hood of our car, partnered up with the local sheriff sergeant. It's pre-identified in a controlled environment with as much information as possible. Charlie, I'll let you talk about this one because I'm not sure where this one was going.
All right. No, I'll take it from here. I really appreciate your input and your leadership on this. It's been great partnering with you, with Chief Mortensen, with Captain Ingram. I was lucky enough to work with Captain Ingram in two of the fires. He sits on the CAL FIRE Incident Team Three, and so I was able to be in the tent with him and the teams for both the Glass Fire and the CZU Complex Fire in this last season. So learned a ton. Once the plan is developed in, in these situations, communicating that gets to be very complicated. And one of the, one of the main reasons it gets complicated is there are so many jurisdictions involved. If you're just, if you have a small fire, it's just in your area, or you have a small civil unrest, or you have a hazardous materials release or something in your area, that's, that's relatively easy to communicate. But when you get something that crosses multiple county lines, you've got every fire department, police department, you've got multiple GIS departments, multiple emergency systems, and you've got some teams with Everbridge, some with Code Red, it gets really complicated to get that message out, and the message ends up getting, getting lost, like the game of telephone. So so how do we make sure that there's one message? We don't need to necessarily stop delivering it to all those different platforms, but how do we make sure that all those platforms have the same information? And so in working with folks like Chief Glass and Chief Mortensen and others in San Mateo County, Contra Costa County, et cetera, we were able to define this overall platform with the goal of reducing the time and the complication around evacuations, providing information and that the same information that the agency sees, the public should be able to see as well, integrating with your existing channel, so not replacing Everbridge, not replacing your OES solutions, but getting the right data into those. That multi-agency coordination piece that Chief Glass mentioned, and you had that picture of all of those people at those incidents, real-time map information, and then over and over again, hyper-local knowledge. One of the big things you see, especially on these large events, is that people come from all over. We had at the CZU Complex Fire and at the Glass Fire, there were trucks from Texas. There were trucks from New Jersey. People were coming to help. How do we get those folks to have that local information without having to find somebody where it's stuck in their head? So kind of pulling that out. So the CZU Complex Fire, what, we went from having one zone under an evacuation order to, on the 18th, five days later, we had 134 zones across three counties that were under either an evacuation order or under an evacuation warning. And Ian Larkin, Chief Larkin, the CZU unit chief, really said that having Zone Haven in the tent with them made it very simple for them to get about 70,000 people out in a safe manner. Here are some images from actually inside the tent. This is Captain Ingram here. You can see that the zones were used both on the, the large maps. They were printed out every day for the status reports and the large, and on the wall maps that, that everybody picked up. Sheriff was printing them out and using grease pencils and working with local fire. There was a huge amount of collaboration, and these meetings went very quick. These meetings might be 10, 15 minutes in the morning because everybody came in already having thought about it from the zones, zone standpoint, already picked the traffic control points, and they were able to just confirm it with everybody in the room. The big thing I learned from these events is that the evacuation is fast. Took five days to evacuate the CZU complex area. It took several months to get everybody back in. The repopulation is really where this thing starts to also become very valuable. So you can see in the bottom right here, PG&E was using the zones to help communicate where down transmissions lines had been fixed, where areas had been re-energized, and where it was safe for people to go back in. And so having that common language, that common semantic really drove that. So here's an example of the app on an iPad. These are actual screenshots from the CZU Complex Fire. So this was the day that we got to the maximum number of zones that were actually under an order or a warning. So the line here, this yellow line, everything north of that is San Mateo County. Everything south of that is Santa Cruz County. And then all the ones in yellow were the 11 zones that were, I think it was on the 23rd or 24th, were turned to warning. So there was one day where parts of Santa Clara County went under an actual warning. So in the application, they were able to select the zones that were under warning. That gave a total population structure count, acreage, right? Who were the, who were the different jurisdictions that have responsibility for that? And then they were able to set that as a warning and generate the fire, the news release that went out with the information on it. There was one link on the bottom of the, of the news release that sent people to the community site. So there was one place, whether you were in San Mateo County, Santa Cruz County, or Santa Clara County, one place to go to get that information. I was on several other fires during this, this season, and there were many where each jurisdiction had their own map, had their own color scheme, had their own naming convention, didn't show the zones from the neighboring counties. So it was very complicated for, for folks, if they lived in one county but worked in another county, or they had relatives in a nearby county, you had to go to multiple points to even figure out what was current and accurate.
And Charlie, really, really quick before we transition off this slide, myself and Captain Arena's lieutenant, and many of you know Captain Arena, he's, he's the sheriff's captain that is responsible for protection in Los Altos Hills. We worked very closely to get together for many years, and I was on the phone with him in the tent alongside Chris Ingram and Charlie and these folks as we decided to place these certain zones within Santa Clara County under, under warning. And that was due to a weather condition that was going to come in and threaten to push the fire to the top of the ridge and back it down the other side. And to contrast what was going on at the same time on the SCU fire, they were using hand-drawn maps. And again, there's nothing wrong with that. That's how we've done it. But in a matter of minutes, I was able to call Captain Arena, provide him the zones, send him the PDFs. He was able to see it on the website in, in real time, and then share that with his command leadership and then receive the order because only the law enforcement officer has the capability of executing the evacuation warning and/or order. But again, in, in minutes, we had communicated a clear picture and a total number of, of people that were going to be affected, including cars and homes and a number of people. So again, a really streamlined, effective tool. You can see that on the right-hand side, the population that that impacted, the vehicles that that impacts, and the square, what is it, acres that, I guess you could probably convert it into square miles, but it's showing there as acres. But again, it shows us the immediate impact, and it shows which jurisdictions are responsible for it as well.
And then in, I'll show you it in the app in a sec, but the same information, so once the alert is set, so we say that these are under warning, that same information is automatically sent to Waze. So for example, Waze has the zones in their system, and So for example, Waze has the zones in their system and Waze will put an alert up and redirect people around the zones, right? So our goal is to make sure that people get that information where they expect it and not have to go hunting for it. In addition, the same information then gets posted to Twitter and to Facebook. The same information gets emailed to all of the internal folks. So for example, in San Mateo County, if the status of a zone changes. All fire chiefs, all police chiefs, all OES managers and other folks in the leadership get access to that. So even if it happens in, you know, South San Francisco, the Redwood City Fire Chief is going to know there's been an evacuation, there's been a status change. And then they can take the link and go straight into the application to find where that that's happening. And then Santa Clara County has also using a tool called Intera for Incident Command. And that that tool can consume the data coming out of the Zone Haven application. So our goal is to be the common source. And then everybody has access to the most current information. And that is mission critical in making sure that the communication is right, because you'll see folks going out with maps into the field. The hard copy printed maps from two days ago, three days ago. And so being able to have that the the most current stuff showing up in the applications that they use every day is incredibly helpful. And then that link takes people to community.zonehaven.com. You can go there today. Community.zonehaven.com is what we call Zone Haven Aware. It's the community site that is synchronized with the agency site. So if a zone changes in the agency site, it automatically changes in the community site so people can see it right away. So the community site allows you to enter in your address, find your zone, access the information about your zone. Get some preparation resources, links, PDFs, other things that may be of interest. These are things that both we can provide and you and your cert cert agencies can develop and provide. And then always on live updates. And so this is this is a key element to making sure people get access to that. And then finally, one of the big things that that we've been doing with agencies, once, once the zones are approved, once the information's in and you guys are ready. We we've been supporting Know Your Zone campaign. So we provide a small marketing plan and a variety of assets that you can deploy in any way that you want. This is a billboard that was deployed in the task, the city of Atascadero. Nevada County is has has refrigerator magnets so that people can write their own zone names down. There's there are a variety of different, you know, brochures and things that you can send out to help people get aware of their zones. Because we really discovered during the CZU Complex that having access and knowing your zone beforehand was incredibly valuable for the community. In many cases, we've seen evacuations happen where the first time somebody sees a zone is the day that that zone gets drawn during the actual event. So knowing that zone beforehand becomes very, very helpful. So I don't know how much more time we have. I don't want to push too much further, but I can open up the application and show you a little bit of that. Or maybe this has been enough for you to get an understanding of of what's happening with with Zone Haven and the county.
I for one would like to see a demo.
Was that you, Mr. Warman?
Yes, it was.
All right, well, you're the president. All right, so first, this is the actual application that Chief Mortensen and Chief Glass, Ingram, et cetera, all have access to. The first thing you'll notice is that any any agency personnel, so this is for the government agency personnel that logs in here, can see everybody else's data. Ultimately, it's a mutual aid and a collaboration tool, and that tool extends beyond any one region. You can see for Santa Clara County, we made the lucky choice of of doing a pilot for ten percent of the county. And we did that early last year, about a year ago. Turned out that it was fortuitous because we ended up having to evacuate or put in a warning due to the CZU Complex Fire. Now, we had not done that over in the SCU Complex, so as Chief Glass stated, they were using the paper maps, et cetera. Luckily, that was mostly in low population areas, whereas this was heading towards, you know, some pretty valuable real estate and a lot of a lot of people. The I'll come in here to South San Francisco. This is one of the areas where. They've done a lot of the the pre work. So in I'll bring on some. Of the this the points. So what you see now are critical evacuation facilities. So these are things like schools, hospitals, childcare facilities, and then arrival points, which are where we would send people. So shelters, on ramps, that kind of thing. And if you click on an individual zone and say, okay, I'm thinking of evacuating this zone, I see a population of four thousand. Well, what happens if I evacuate these four zones together? Well, now all of a sudden I'm dealing with sixteen thousand people. So kind of gives you a sense of the scale that something could could get to, and I'll show you some other stuff around the track.
Did we lose Charlie?
I think we lost Charlie.
Okay.
Charlie, you're locked up. There he's back.
Oh, he's back. Charlie, you back?
You're cutting in and out, but you're back now.
All right, all right, let's see. Okay. All right, we can see it now. Okay, so am I back?
Yep.
All right, I apologize for that. So I clicked on this zone. I'm selecting the evacuation pre plan. Every zone has a two page PDF. If you were to scan this QR code right now, this would automatically download to your your phone. This is a way that folks that are coming from out of town can get a paper copy or from that paper copy, get an electronic copy. This has the basic information around the critical evacuation facilities, agencies, population and structures. Key thing here that we need to pull out of the local brains, or what are some of the key special conditions? Is there are there gates and gate codes? Are there certain places where there's? You know, stored materials or hazardous materials that people need to know about? Are there ham radio operators? Those are the kind of things that, you know, are unique to each zone. And then the second page is really all about. Preparing for evacuating that zone. So you've got the the traffic control points, you've got the routes, and then you've got the the places that you might send those folks. So a. An example would be here is the Terra Bay Center. This is a potential evacuation point. If I edit this, I can go in here and turn this on, and now it would be available and visible on that community site, right? So right now on the community site, this is the live community site, so you guys could go in here yourself. If we come into South San Francisco, there are no arrival points that are available to us, but if I turn this one on. And then go back to the site. Terra Bay, did it go on? Sorry, you're the Zoom is in my way there. Back to here. As Terra Bay Edit. Community Visible. And. Save. Okay. Oh, I'm not in there right. There we go. So it should show up here. If it's not, I don't know why. That's what happens when I do the live demo. The other thing that you can do in here is if you click on the zone, they can change it. I'm not going to do it here, but we go to. Normal Advisory, Evacuation Warning, Shelter in Place, et cetera. So if I make that change right now, this will actually publish live to the to the site. And then it would change everywhere. People would get their emails, it would go to Waze, all of that kind of thing. So it gets very easy for for them to do that. And then anytime that you make an edit to the to these documents or to this information in here. Evacuation Details, Zone Information, Population Resources, et cetera. Anytime those changes happen, the PDF is automatically up to date. So in the past, you may have received a three ring binder. As part of a deliverable, those three ring binders get out of date fairly quickly. So by being able to do trainings, do a live, you know, live incidents, we learn and we can add additional information over time. Two more things I'll show around traffic, turn these off and turn these on. So these are all pre planned traffic control points. A traffic control point could have a number of officers. It can also have the number of cones and other stuff that's pre planned for that. Here, if we were to evacuate this this area and send people to this on ramp. You would see that there's about five hundred cars that would be expected to hit that on ramp. If we evacuate this zone and this zone as well, we're starting to get a lot of cars loading onto that on ramp. If we added a few more. We'll start to see over four thousand cars being going through this point here. So for these these folks, we may say, look, your primary route for these zones here is actually to head out towards two eighty. It may not be the shortest route, but that's the best route. So that's the kind of thinking and analysis that can be done prior to an actual event. Let me go into training. The last thing I'll show here in in this application is the ability to do training. So I will go into new here. Los Altos. Los Altos Hills, you put your LA CFD. Those counties. Okay, there we go. I think I missed an H. All right. So Fire Flood Shooter will do a fire in this case. I'm going to pick, you have a choice of running your own fire using a simulation tool or using an existing fire. If you run a new fire, it'll take the current weather conditions and the forecast and then use that to predict where the fire would go. I'm going to pick a fire that I know here and we'll run this one. And what you'll see is it'll give you a one, three and a five hour perimeter. And that allows you to then determine who if you like during initial attack, whether we want to call for an evacuation quickly. So the sheriff or the battalion chief shows up here, sees this thing going pretty quick. It doesn't, you know, maybe the winds are a little too high like the word the campfire, we're not going to be able to get any air support in there. We run a model, we see this thing could go fast and it could go to a populated area. Maybe we want to at least put out a warning. If not, we may want to put out an entire evacuation order. Within one hour, it could hit three thousand people. In three hours, we could hit nine thousand people. But if this thing really runs in five hours, we could hit thirty five thousand people. And we know these models aren't perfect, so I'm going to add one other zone in here. And now I've got my selection set. I can run my evacuation order, type in my message, determine where I'm going to send it and then go. I won't do that right now since this is the live application. So prepare, go back to that. So within Santa Clara County. These are the zones that are have been created already. So these are the ones now that Chief Mortensen and Captain Ingram are working with each of the agency groups. We really like to make sure we have a multi agency team that's looking at this, because if we have a conversation with fire. And we don't with law, we're going to have another conversation at some point with law as well. So it's best to get both law and fire in the room, talking about this stuff from the beginning. So. This is, this is what's been done so far for for the for the county. I guess you guys are up here. And the key thing for us is, you know, if a fire starts over here, you know, it could be across multiple counties. We could have Portola Valley, Palo Alto and Los Altos Hills all participating in some sort of event together. And so having consistency across borders is is mission critical. And then I'm going to just give you, Chief Glass, a very quick look, but. Don't don't get too excited yet, but here's an initial look at the whole county. So that's it. Can't see it anymore. We've been working hard to to get to get that.
Really good, Charlie. And just so the the board knows that we did secure a regional grant for funding of all zones for every jurisdiction in the county. And again, we are going again tomorrow. I have an approval authority meeting for grant for additional funding for a second year of of service. The initial funding was to create all the zones in the entire county. And again, I really looking forward to seeing the work that Charlie and his team are doing. And again, I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce Battalion Chief Tyler Mortensen, who's on the call, who'll be the project lead for Santa Clara County Fire. And who will be reaching out if he hasn't already to schedule those. Local meetings. And I know some of you have met him or had dealings with him either in his time at Saratoga. Tyler was a firefighter and a fire captain there, promoted battalion chief with us. Has been doing an amazing job. He just got done running our vaccine clinic at the fairgrounds. And so he's on his first tour back to work at Campbell Station, working in Battalion eighty three. And so Tyler is on the on the call and available to take any specific questions you may have as it relates to the zone creation and or future plans of build out for Los Altos Hills County Fire District.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, so. All right, we've got this time for questions. Terry, I see you got your hand very politely raised. Thank you very much, Terry.
I don't have a question, but as a recipient of a warning during the CZU, I just want to say thank you, guys. Great work.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other comments, questions from the commission?
George has a.
George, go ahead.
I'm just going to echo what Terry said. This sounds so well thought out, so exciting and powerful. Like I can see how it just shortened response times and really get the word out how important that is. Thank you.
This is Jay Logan. I wanted to comment too and just, you know, thank Charlie Crocker and Central Fire for being so progressive with this. And you know, when we hear about fires and we look forward to the season coming and not so forward to the season coming, it's really very daunting. And I felt a sense of energy and enthusiasm and embracement that, you know, we can do this and we can do it together as a united community. And we can really put our best thinking and our best technology in front of us to have some kind of hope. And that's all really life is about, is that hope. And I just really thank you for not only embracing it with technology and showing us, but exhibiting it in your demonstration. And it just goes so far. So from my heart, thank you very much for what you're doing for our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jay. Okay. Is there any public comment or questions on this item? All right, I see none. Thank you very much, Charlie and Chief Glass.
We'll now. I'm going to sign off here. Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you. Reach out if you have any questions. Take care.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will now move to item six, receive the presentation from Santa Clara County Fire State Council. Chief Executive Officer and Managing Director on Trends and Wildfire Events in Preparation for the Fire Season, which appears to be on us very soon. All right.
Good evening.
All right, so tonight we've got Seth Chalet and Pressed Council Managing Director, Eugenia. Redler joining us to provide a presentation. Mr. Chalet, this is Rendler. Thank you for sharing with us tonight. Please provide the presentation.
Thank you and good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Great, thank you. And I want to just quickly say both thank you to Charlie and thank you to Chief Glass. I think that some of what I will do in my series of slides will validate a lot of what Chief Glass said. And we actually share a slide or two. We didn't plan this, but I think that will shorten the presentation a little bit to everybody's advantage here on the call tonight. So next slide, if you will. Are we able to advance to the next slide? Thank you. Is there any way to make this a little larger? If not, that's okay. I don't have one of those arrows that says you are here, but we are here. And the basic premise that I want obviously to get across with this that most people know is we are in a moderate to high. Hazard zone according to this index here. We sit right here. If you could see it or blow it up, you would see that we're somewhere between the yellow, moderate to the kind of goldish high. Obviously, it's something that we already know and we'll talk about the implications of this in the next slide. So what we look at and what most people know here is that the trend certainly hasn't been our friend for the last couple of years. So what we look at and what most people know here is that the trend certainly hasn't been our friend for the last couple of years with respect to a lot of factors, the drought index being one of them. And then what we'll talk about in the next slide coming up are things like drought factors in our local area. I took the most recent drought snapshot monitor available from April 13th. And that also speaks to the earlier slide. In fact, this one slows a slightly, based on the coloration, a slightly greater increase in, in, in the drought hazard index than the other one. But roughly they're, they're, they're both the same. Next slide, Eugenia, please. Thank you. Um, this is a slide that I think I shared with Chief Glass. The point being here is the trend over the last couple of years is, is pretty obvious. Of the largest 20 wildfires and this data comes from Cal Fire, nine of the 20 have occurred in, you know, since 2017. So in terms of total acreage burned in each of the individual fires, nine have been since 2017. Next slide, please. In that same period, 12 of the most destructive fires, so 12 out of the 20 and destructive really looks at the number of structures that have burned in each of the individual fires. In that same period, not only have we seen larger fires, but based upon the structures destroyed, we've even seen an uptick in the number of, of the severity in the number of structures over the last couple of years. So both trends kind of line up to show that it's certainly not abating in any material way over the last couple of years. Next slide, please. This is a slide that our partners at the Fire Safe Council, we have a partnership with San Jose State. And I think this is a really interesting slide. And I know Chief Glass touched on it. But you know, just in the last week or two, they took some measurements on the chaparral. And April is supposed to be the month with the highest of the fire moisture content for the vegetation. It actually showed that it's the lowest in the April period that's ever been measured. So we're supposed to be at a point in time this year in April where it's the highest. And for the month of April, they just took the lowest measurement. And really that's a measure of the, of the, of the moisture in the plants. So they have less ability to hold off and fight off any fires or sparks or anything that could cause a fire. So we're drier. And, and this is a, you know, a worrying trend. I think everybody here has some sense of, you know, we are on the cusp of potentially a, a difficult wildfire season. Next slide, please. Thank you. Can everybody see this? Okay. I've got two slides from Cal Fire. And we might've got a little skewed in the formatting here, but the trend really is, if you look, this is, this is a snapshot as of April 11th of this year, year to date, April 11th, 2021. And underneath that, it shows the same period in the prior year. So April, January 1 through April 11th, 2020. What we can see this year compared to the same period last year is there are already more fires this year and more acreage burned in the same commensurate period than there was last year. And what's really striking to me is if you look at the five-year trend for the same interval in the same period, right, we're, we're, we're virtually double of what it's been historically over the last five years. Next slide, please. So the slide that I just showed is data from Cal Fire and that's through the entire state of California. This is a little bit more specific to the region that Los Altos Hills is in. This is Cal Fire's northern California region. And if you run the numbers, you know, rough back of the napkin, it's about 40% of the fires that were on the prior slide are happening in the northern part of the state. But you can see that the trend here is also as worrying locally in the northern region. 67 flyers as of the 11th, over 51 acres. So I think both data points really speak to the fact that both across the state and here locally, there's more wildfire activity. Now, what this data doesn't say and what I was not able to really ascertain is we know that in the neighborhood of 95% of all wildfires are human caused. And so the ignition, the ignition sources here, I don't have any data for. I can't say how many are specific to say lightning strikes. But if we just assume that that pattern and the correlation holds, you know, the vast majority are human influenced fires. Anything from catalytic converters on a car burning and starting grass fires to population density at work and people starting more fires. Next slide, please. I just wanted to put this up because I think it's a really interesting study that I'm glad to make available to Jay. It was published in February and it analyzed a lot of big data sets using what's known as a machine learning tool called MaxNet, where the study and the researchers went to the Sierra Nevadas to kind of come up with what the data would say about what are the most prevalent factors and data points to look at the fire risk. And they really came up with three points that seem to be purely consistent indicators of, of a fire risk. The largest data set was what they call the vapor pressure deficit, which, and I'm going to look at my chichi here, but it really is the deficit. It's the difference between the air's water content and the saturation point. The next biggest indicator is population density, right? So the greater density of population, the more risk of wildfire. And I think that correlation tends to hold because if we look at the rule of thumb, we're about 95% of all wildfires tend to have a human ignition source. That would seem to make sense. So the point really of this slide is that there's a lot of interesting data and a lot of modeling that we have at our disposal. And we have luxury in this area of having access to both UC Berkeley and San Jose State to be able to bring technology to bear and do some predictive analytics that might help us with various aspects of temperature, weather, and to try to get some indicators that may be of assistance to helping to put, put together some risk modeling. Next slide, slide please, Eugenia. Really, it's a dense slide, but it just translate, translated into what I just said. It really explains what those different factors are. But the three biggest being vapor pressure deficit and population density by far are the biggest outliers and predictors of wildfire risk in the Sierras. Next slide, please. And lastly, we know all of this, but I think it's good to look at it and see it on a slide. Really, climate change is a factor. It is not, according to the experts, the primary factor, but it is a factor that's leading to increased wildfire challenges in our area here. Clearly the snow melt, the snow is melting. First of all, we, everybody here knows we have less snow historically than we have historically had. And not only do we have less snow in terms of the snowpack, but the snow is also melting earlier. So that kind of aligns with the fire moisture content that we're seeing. There's less water at an earlier point in the season, in the vegetation with increasing temperatures. It really just creates the atmosphere to create greater risk. And that's just some high level trends. I'm glad to answer any questions that I can and provide any additional backup data or support. If there's any questions from the audience.
All right. Any questions from the commission?
If not, then I will say thank you and I will turn it over to Eugenia that will talk to the specific projects we're doing with Los Altos Hills.
Great. Thank you, Shet.
You're welcome.
Hello, everyone. So we've gotten some good trends and overviews, which probably no one is surprised by, but it's good to be reinforced and get some specifics. So I decided to get local. One of the things that is important that Denise and Jay have been talking about, you know, ever since we started working with you in late 2019 is the effectiveness of Firewise. And this is a slide, my pointer doesn't work here. It is. So in 2019, in, in, in mid 2018, we rolled out a program to support Firewise communities. And in 2019, we started helping Los Altos Hills do this. And we had one Firewise community when we started this in 2018. And you can see on this slide how we've started to fill, fill up Firewise communities here along the, you know, the beginning initially is along that ridge. This is 35 right here. And the goal is to cover the sides of these mountains with Firewise communities because that helps the residents with their defensible space. It's programs that help them become, you know, ready and it ties directly into the ready, set, go for individual residents. But the, the bigger picture is that the more of these Firewise communities we have quilted together, the more interconnected defensible space we have, that low, slow, keep it on the ground, give the responders time to get in there. You know, those types of things. So that's one of the big pushes that we talk about is what the individuals can do and Firewise and all the tools. And one of the newest things that we're working on in conjunction with probably close to 100 different agencies. And I've recently invited Jay and Denise to come and participate is the Highway 35 Task Force. CZU unit has initiated this large collaborative of all the people working on Highway 35 and actually now Summit Road. We've extended it all the way from 92. So San Mateo Firewise, RCD, and not Firewise, excuse me, Fire Safety Council and the RCDs up there, the Public Utility Commissions, there's Mid Penn, there's so many people collaborating along 35 all the way down to Highway 17. They were going to tie it into the fuel break that we put together in 2019 and 2020. When they invited us, they discovered that we were actually doing work on Summit Road all the way down to 152 Mount Madonna County Park. So now we have the entire ridge line and this roadway, which is a major artery for evacuation in those areas being collaborated on. The environmental paperwork is being put together. We've broken it up into miles so that we make sure and connect each other's fuel breaks and escape routes. Because if we put in inner, if we put in disconnected fuel breaks and escape routes, the fire just end runs around somebody's work because it hasn't connected to the next person's work. So this is going to become a hugely effective, hugely critical, you know, project in our area. And this is the little section that, you know, applies to you. So just for reference, here's 35. You know, you're, the big fire and big basin was down over here. And here's the parks that you probably all recognize and have probably been to. So this is a huge project and we're super excited to be part of it and have the places that you love to go also be part of it. Mid Penn is very involved in this. So are the other open spaces. So bringing the same project down to a local level for you. Here you are here in Los Altos Hills. Here's our, the 35 project. Some of this work has already been done by us and South Skyline Fire Safety Council. More of it's being planned. There's other areas in here like Los Trancos Road and other areas where they're, you know, also continuing to do the work on the connective roads that are in here. So you can see how even though you don't touch this parcels and the, the road directly, you can see how close you are. And you can see that if they can hold the fire, so here's the top end of the CZU fire, the big basin area. They can hold this here at this ridge, what a big impact that has on your city, your town. So that's one of the big goals of 35 is just as we did with 17, let's start, you know, getting points of where the, you know, the firefighters and the first responders and people can really get in there and make, make a difference and put things into boxes and slow things down. So really exciting, really large landscape scale project. Happy to be a part of it. Happy to bring it to you. These are the kinds of collaborations that we can do with the technology. You've seen how Zone Haven can apply to the evacuation. Now we're talking about mapping and GIS and Zoom collaboration from all over the tri-county area. So Jay especially wanted you to hear about this one. One of the kinds of things that you can do to support this. Jay and Denise come to the, the Highway 35 Task Force. We've already started working with Firewise in your area. The biggest thing that we know is messaging makes all the difference. Like Seth said earlier, 90% of the fires, 95% of the fires, it depends who statistics you read, are usually a human ignition source. This is the critical time to just re-message everyone all the time. County Fire is doing it. This is their series of webinars up here. Firewise has rolled out a new set of flyers explaining to people new things to do, better sets of pictures, how to, you know, take care of home hardening, this kind of thing. Are the go-bags ready? Or, you know, did they end up getting put away at Christmas time? Oh, I don't need it yet. It's been raining all this time. Well, it's not raining anymore. So how to avoid human caused ignitions. None of this is news to, to any of us, right? But it's time to re-message and push it out to the public. The ignitions have already started. You know, we're already seeing all these types of fires, grass fires and things are already happening. Red flag days, we want to make sure that the red flag days, and this is a more recent type of messaging, red flag days need to be people's forewarning. You know your go-bag is. Is your car full of gas? Is it turned around in the driveway or is it going to get stuck in the garage when the power goes out? So these types of messages are things that you can do. And now it sounds like as soon as Zone Haven's ready, we're going to add, do you know your zone to these types of early messaging, these planning messages. Another thing that we're working with your GIS department is to put together a map similar to this one. This is Saratoga. And what we've done in this one is we've laid out the, the projects that we've been involved with in the region. So you see some fire breaks here. You see some reduction. We've added all their chipping parcels. So all these, this heat map effect here, this is all the parcels in Saratoga that participate in chipping. So you can start to see who's using chipping, who's not. How do we get in there and talk to the people who aren't? We get that connectivity of properties with defensible space already taken care of. This is the wooey line. This is the city line. So the reason I put Saratoga up here is because yours isn't built yet. And that's one of the things that we've been discussing with your GIS department and Jay and Denise is getting something put together like this on your behalf so that we can come in here and we can figure out how to connect the dots. Does it mean that their defensible space is already done? That's why they're not using your chipping program. Does it mean they don't know about it? Or they're not able to do the work on their property to bring it to the property line? Do we need a second type of support system there for people who aren't able to physically clear their brush? Maybe, you know, what are the alternatives so that we can get more of the map to look like this and less of it to look like they aren't participating? So we're going to roll one of these types of maps out for your community as well and help with the planning and help with the outreach to get more people using the programs you already have put together. Jay also asked me to discuss some of the things that your community can do on a larger scale to support changes. I'm just going to move everybody off the screen here. So landscape scale projects, that's what we just looked at with 35. Even though 35 doesn't, isn't bordering your town, supporting that project with either funds, expertise, messaging, those types of collaborative in-kind matches and helping that project get off the ground helps you. Home hardening and building code changes. This is an area that's going to be politics, going to be voted on. Supporting those types of code changes and updates helps everyone. Programs that help residents overcome years of deferred maintenance. We're always brainstorming. Who's missing? Why didn't they participate? And how can we get them on board? I love this Subaru over on the left hauling its stuff into a drive-up day. Maybe drive-up is the next thing that your chipping program needs to have added to it. Maybe there's people that don't have anywhere that they can, they can leave their chips in their piles. Maybe we need to offer, you know, someone a place to do it all in one day and drop it off and have it chipped on the spot. Because there's not a roadside place on the property to put it, to participate in the formula that we're currently using. Getting businesses involved. Hey, your workers are here. Your infrastructure's here. If there's a wildland fire where your people and your workers live, they're not coming to work. They're going to be evacuated or out of their homes. So that affects your business. We're all in this together. And then of course, protecting and maintaining the infrastructure. On the right, this is the, one of the cell towers that burned over in the CZU fire. I know that last year you all did a lot of hydrant work. You replace leaky ones. You're, you do a good job at, you know, getting out there and trying to be proactive and keeping those supplies together, allotting different things in the budget for those public works, maintenance. And then new messaging. So this, this new tree spacing diagram, I love this tree spacing diagram. It answers a lot of questions for people because they want to know, I don't want to moonscape. I don't want to cut everything down. So this teaches people about So this teaches people about close to the house, further apart, not a lot of groupings. The further you get out, the more you can keep that wooded feel that everyone loves to live in the hills for. So. Couple different layers, a few different suggestions there on how to keep up the great momentum that got started in fourth quarter of 2019. And here we are. Here's our contact information. So we're happy to take questions now. We're happy to work out one-on-one, whoever needs to talk to us. Hi Joan.
All right, Joan, go ahead.
Thanks, hi Eugenia. Thanks Seth and Eugenia for speaking this evening. So how are we leveraging some of your educational programs for our residents? Are we doing them completely separate or do we use some of yours also?
You certainly use some of ours. Denise and I and Victoria have done joint presentations. We've put together webinars, video webinars. We tend to go through neighborhood at a time. So we've done wildfire evacuation workshops, we've done Firewise workshops. I help provide messaging and flyers. We help provide website content and information. So.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions from commissioners?
I would like to comment and just, this is Jay Logan. Thank Seth and Eugenia so much. I think we've heard both ends of the spectrum, haven't we? We heard about evacuation and the horrors and the terror of fire, and now we've heard the other side. And that is how we can be proactive, work together as a community, build these resilient communities and all of the tools that you have in your toolkit that you're able to provide to us. And I'm just so very grateful. And thank you for your partnership with us and really look forward to. Eugenia, thank you for mentioning how much Denise and I have been participating in all the fine works that we've been doing. And thank you for inviting us to the Highway 35 event and that collaboration. So maybe Denise would like to say a few words here too, because, you know, we're part and parcel of who you are and we are so grateful for that. Denise, want to comment?
Yeah, not to be redundant on some of my emergency services manager report, but we also have been doing a lot around the shaded fuel break. Fire Safe Council helps us run our chipping program and the actual administration. So again, I want to just kind of reiterate too, they're a nonprofit. So, you know, going out and doing this work in a, in a format, their only, their only mission is to reduce the wild vampire problem in Santa Clara County. All over the state with Fire Safe Councils, but specifically here with Santa Clara County Fire Safe Councils. So that being said, you know, we just really appreciate the challenges that come along with being a nonprofit and also the positives that come along with that and that the, the great people that you have that are really, you know, people that work for nonprofits frequently are very humble and very interested in positive outcomes. It's not just based on what you, your paycheck is. So I want to thank you again. Put a little shout out if you need someplace to donate to. Fire Safety Council will take your money for the nonprofit status also. They're probably a little too, too, I don't know, what's the, to say that. So I'll just throw that out there for them, not to be, not to make it an awkward moment, but anyhow. So thank you again. Again, I'll talk a little bit more about what we're doing in my emergency services manager report. So thank you. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Well, thank you for reminding about Moody, Moody Road that we, we just got started on that one and I look forward to putting that on your model of your GIS map too.
Very good.
Could I add just one quick point?
Yes, Seth.
I didn't bring it up before, but it's worth keeping an eye on. There's some new legislation that was just introduced a couple of weeks back. Sponsored by Rep Dodd out of Napa, Senate Bill 440. You may be familiar with it. The Chronicle ran a pretty interesting article on it. And long story short is it looks to restructure the way that the state funds its catastrophic loss programs, which principally today is earthquake. And it looks to put wildfire risk and earthquake into the same pool and take it out of the reinsurance funding. And the projection is that it would probably save about 150 million over the first couple of years. And that extra funding, the difference between how it's currently paid for and the savings, it would be two-thirds would go towards paying for home hardening provisions and services throughout the state. And the last one-third would go towards retrofitting for earthquake, earthquake retrofitting for existing structures. I'm glad to send some information to Jay. I think there's a long, it's probably a high hurdle for it to ultimately clear, but it could be some significant legislation that would actually put a home hardening payments to, to the taxpayers.
Great. Thank you, Seth. All right. There aren't any further questions from the commission? And do we have any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item seven, which is the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Administration Monthly Report to the County Committees. Item 7A and 7B are the various monthly reports presented to the Santa Clara County, the County of Santa Clara. Item 7C and 7D are reports of the two monthly, are on the two countywide studies being conducted by LAFCO and the County of Santa Clara, respectively. General Manager Logan, please provide the report.
Well, thank you, Board President Warren. I would like to go through these reports very quickly. Item 7A and 7B reports are the fifth of a 12 monthly report to the above county committees, which is Hewlett and FGOC. And these committee reports are at the request of Supervisor Ellenberg and Semidion. And then were directed by the Board of Supervisors. The district performed these reports on October 6, 2020. The conclusion of the Management Audit Division, after reviewing the district's March report, is consistent with each of the prior monthly reports. And I quote, "In conclusion, we believe that the fire district has implemented or is on track to implement the audit recommendations as adopted by the Board of Supervisors." So after five months, that's a very good progress report and I just thank everyone and particularly the Board of Commissioners for helping the district achieve that mark after five months. Item 7C is the LAFCO Agenda Materials that reports that a consultant for the LAFCO Countywide Fire Services Review is finalized. And Los Altos Town City Manager Kirk Cahill was on the Consultant Selection Committee and is also a member of the LAFCO TAC Committee. And TAC is Technical Advisory Committee for the study. The study is expected to take approximately one year to conclude. I attended the April 19th LAFCO TAC meeting and Acting Chief Glass was, Acting Fire Chief Glass attended along with Los Altos Hills Community Members and Council Member. City Manager Cahill spoke as the TAC member to introduce the components of prevention, protection and building resilient communities and community outreach and urged that those items be added to the scope of the review. These components were added and I thank City Manager Cahill and the members who spoke from the Los Altos Hills public for taking that on and doing that. I think it's a great benefit to the studies that those components be included. Item 7D is the report to the County Board of Supervisors for their meeting today on the selection of Matrix Consulting and the agreement to conduct a county-led comprehensive fire and emergency service, emergency medical study. Anticipated length of the study is one year. I attended the meeting today and happy to report that Supervisor Semidion recommended addition to the study to add prevention, protection and building of community resiliency to the scope of work of the study. The Board of Supervisors agreed and approved this addition to the study. Commissioner Tonka is following these two studies and that's in alignment with her strategic goal too. And then Commissioner Kearney and I have worked together from the initiation of these studies, which was back in the fall of 2020, to the present. And we review, annotate and follow the studies, provide input when requested as the studies are developing. So I think that's a pretty robust explanation of the items 7A through D. These are very important items and I just wanted to take the time to bring them to the commission's attention. So thank you. There's no action on these items except to receive the report and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you. End of my report.
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the commission? All right, seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? Go ahead, George.
I just want to commend General Manager Logan for her artfully crafting the documents and then also being ready to present. I've seen in the last couple of the fluid meetings, she's had an exchange with Supervisor Semidion and it's allowed us the opportunity to, to get our message out there. And I think that was very, very, how shall I say, I guess, like I said, artfully crafted to manage that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I wanted to say too, that Commissioner Tyson has been my, my partner in this monthly reporting and is always on the Zoom calls with the Board of Supervisors, Hewlett and FGOC, as is County Council Chris Chelliden and Sarah Hendricks, who provides support. So it is a team effort and the success means, I think you need a team to make success in this world anymore. So none of us go it alone. And thank you, Commissioner Tyson and all for that support at the County Board of Supervisors meetings.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item eight, which is received, Santa Clara County Fire Chief report. Item eight is the report. Assistant Chief Glass, please provide the report.
Good evening, President Warren, members of commission, staff and public. We'll be presenting the report here momentarily. I did want to take an opportunity with the president's approval to introduce Battalion Chief Mike Matheson.
Please.
Thank you, President. Battalion Chief Matheson is on the call here tonight. He comes to us from East Bay Regional Parks where he served as Assistant Fire Chief there overseeing vegetation management and their fire operations. Before that, he spent 26 years with CAL FIRE here in the local unit in Santa Clara, serving as the battalion chief that actually provided response to Los Altos Hills as part of the dual jurisdiction area that we both shared with CAL FIRE and Central FIRE. Mike has extensive background in wildland firefighting. He was overseeing the vegetation management program here in the Santa Clara unit. He also oversaw the rotary ring air operations at Alma Station. And Mike is here. I'll let him talk a little bit and he's available for any questions. But I did think it was important to introduce him to everybody and I know that he's already been introduced to General Manager Logan and some members of staff. It's an opportunity for the commissioners to ask any questions they like of Mike. Chief Matheson.
Thank you, Chief Glass. I appreciate the intro. And it's good to meet most, everybody that I haven't already met before. And I appreciate, I've gotten a couple of emails from a bunch of different people from within the district and I appreciate the, the well wishes and I look forward to working with all of you in the future, coming up with, whether it's evacuation planning or home hardening or wildfire resiliency for the county. I look forward to, to doing that with this group.
Great, welcome.
All right. And Mike's position with us will be the Battalion Chief of Pre-Fire Management and Wildfire Resiliency. And he'll be working closely with the district as we move forward on specific projects. Okay, let me pull up the report. Can everyone see the report? Okay. See if I can make it bigger. Uh oh, did I lose it? Okay. Okay, no significant events to report this month, which is great. I'll buzz through the first page here. We are looking at our incident count for March being at about 205. You can see we're a little bit ahead of pace again. We attribute this to coming kind of out of the COVID environment as people begin to travel and return to work. We saw a slight uptick in, in calls from one year ago. Incident count is at 58 for March. That was a decrease from what we saw in February. And again, we didn't have a whole lot of storms, so we're not sure what that decrease was. 20 calls is a significant number when you look at the district's total on average. Hour count by day, this is pretty consistent. We tend to see the majority of the calls indicated by the blue line during the peak times of the day, noon and 5 o'clock. And that's consistent with people out traveling around in rush hour traffic. Orange is the resource commitment. Again, you can see during the day, we have larger numbers of resources responding to those same numbers of calls. So this is the, the unit in and around Los Altos Hills. 29 of the 58 incidents were EMS, 20% service calls. Sorry, 34% were service calls, that total of 20 incidents. Eight fire alarms and two hazardous conditions. One fire, again, just to identify this, this is as the incident was dispatched as a fire, but there were no fire found when the units arrived at scene. If we would have had a fire, we would have indicated that with dollar loss. Taking a look at our average response time for Code 3 for Rescue 74, we're looking at 6.6 minutes and 41 seconds, excuse me, that was on seven responses in the urban density area. And in our rural densities, we were seeing six minutes and 39. Just for comparison, we're shooting for 759 as the threshold mark in the urban area and 1159 in the rural. So we're well below that. And again, we consistently believe that this is, as it relates to the decreased number of people on the roadways allowing us to respond to incidents quicker. We participated in 10 additional programs and we estimate that outreach to be at 103 people. Overview of the map showing the dispersment of the calls within the district and then an ability for you to see what's going on in the city of Los Altos as well. Because some of the resources from Los Altos Hills are crossing into the border there to score Los Altos Hills and vice versa. And you can see that there were two fires reported in Palo Alto's area that we provided assistance on in the north end of the district. And with that, I'm available to take any questions as it relates to the March report.
Great. Thank you, Chief Glass. Are there any questions from commissioners? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, seeing none. Well, now move to item nine, the General Manager Report. Items 9A through D, General Manager Logan, please report, provide the report.
Okay, thank you so much. Are you able to see my screen?
Yeah, I want you to go to presentation mode.
Thank you. Will do. Good coaching. Okay, well.
There we go. That was quick.
Now what do I do? That's pretty funny. Okay. Well, luckily it's a short. So here's my cover story.
There we go.
Thank you. So you'll see a Zoom video picture of the district parcel. And I put that up because it was done by a drone flown by Jackson Ricketts, who's going to join me in the presentation tonight to talk about his videos. And we're very excited to have Jackson on board and is one of our collaborators in his amazing skills at flying drones. It's remarkable. So that is the district parcel. The other port photo is of the CZU evacuation zone from Zone Haven. So I thought those were two good ways to start this presentation. First slide, just to talk about the events, Denise and I attended the San Jose State University Fire Weather Workshop. Excellent, excellent use of our time and learned so much about that. I'm just so appreciative of all the talent we have around us that's doing this research and available to us. And Seth, I want to thank you for always guiding us in the directions of where the important research is going on. So thank you for that. Visit to County Council's office. Corey and I went down in person and reviewed the legal records there, working on the scanning process right now. Thank you, Commissioner Tyson, for inviting me to attend the Rotary CAL FIRE presentation by the Fire Chief and it was on the CZU complex fire and CAL FIRE history, which was very, very interesting. And then as Eugenia Render talked about, Denise and I are attending the Highway Fire, the Highway 35 Fuel Break Meetings, which is quite a conglomeration and a very ambitious project, but going to be very important to the district. And Insurance Commissioner Laura's meeting, which was going to be on home and community insurance and hardening standards, was postponed to a future date. Moving on to slide two, this is the Los Altos Hills Fire Task Force that a group of staff members from the district and council member Leisha Schmidt and I are working on. And I just wanted to give you an overview. I'm hoping that Councilmember Schmidt can join us at a different time. And I just wanted to give you an overview. I'm hoping that Councilmember Schmidt can join us at a different time to speak on this. I think she was on the call, so I'm going to speak on her behalf. But the purpose of the Los Altos Hills Fire Task Force is to create a plan for reducing the loss of fire and property damage and recognizing the potential extremes of fire events such as a CZU fire will continue to increase. Well, interestingly, that's certainly our mission as a district. And the topics include, and you can see those also are mission. So our collaboration with the town of Los Altos Hills, led by Councilmember Schmidt, is extremely important. You'll notice the highlight evacuation routes and life safety of all the topics that emerged, that one I think is taking the primary spot in the list. So if we were to start on one of all of us putting our energy on, it would be around that typically right in line with Zone Haven and right in line with our life safety concerns. Now moving on, a plan for education and outreach videos. You'll hear, I think, when Commissioner Sherlock talks about her goal five, the alignment there about education and outreach, we'll be talking about doing as many videos as we possibly can. And so Jackson Ricketts has provided us some good video clips. And the topic areas I would like to focus on is a plan that will have more video clips on vegetation mitigation, hazardous fuel, fire fuel reduction, which includes dispensable space. And I'd love to video the spring goats grazing. Now, to do that with a drone would be exceptionally important. And just got a note today from City Manager Cahill that he thinks he can arrange that because there is a prohibition on drones flying over the burn preserve. But we're far enough from the burn preserve where we'll be able to get an exemption and fly a drone and be out there and have some really good video clips for you. And then the strategic plan, if we could present that to the community in a library of videos, I think that would just be really exceptional. So with that, I'm hoping to put an agreement together with Jackson Ricketts and to have him continue his video productions. And now I am going to try to screen share and show some of the videos. Jackson, are you there? Can you talk to us about that?
Jackson's not on the call yet. He's said he's logging in now.
Okay, well, it'll probably take me that long, Sarah, to do this. So let's see if we can have him hear some of his exciting work when he comes on board.
So continue on with this project. And this is a good example of how we can do property hygiene around the home when you have a nice heritage type oak like this. This is a valley oak. You can see it's had a long time not being trimmed with all this dead understory and this smaller tree growing next to it. To work on property hygiene and hazardous fuel management, we're going to go ahead and remove the smaller tree and all the lower dead branches. Again, we're talking about that vertical or ladder fuel effect of having the grass burning up into the dry canopy and up into the tree itself. Our goal is to remove the fuel modeling that's continuous. So we want to break that up by lifting these limbs up and removing these shorter ladder fuels that would go up into the tree itself and then increase the potential for fire spread. So for this project, we have a nice heritage oak, and we've done a really good job of limbing this up, removing the dead understory. That has helped with our lateral fuels. We had grasses here that have been mowed. We've taken those grasses away. We removed the lower understory. So we've really reduced the hazardous fuel load and the continuous fuel bed under this tree. For this example, we have an oak tree that will be limbing up to thin out for the ladder fuels or vertical fuel management. We'll be looking at the spacing, removing any dead, damaged, diseased or dying vegetation as our priority for removal. As we move up the hill, we noticed we have some dead redwood trees. Those will be removed. That will also help with our horizontal spacing to thin out the fuel load here on the side of the road. So behind me for this project, we had oak trees. And originally, the branches went down to the ground, and that was a source of laddering. So we've removed those lower branches, and we've taken care of the vertical fuel management while retaining the natural beauty of the oak tree, which is so prevalent in Los Altos Hills.
Okay, that give you a nice flavor for our videos?
Yes, thank you.
You're very welcome. And Jackson, is that not a good introduction to having you make a few comments about your videos and your drone abilities here at the district parcel for us?
Well, thank you very much, Jay. And thank you very much, Board, for having me tonight. Excuse the the lack on the videos. That was just due to streaming, you know, streaming through and getting to your computer and using the software. I guarantee it's very smooth and and there's no glitching. The kind of stuff you saw as we were screen sharing this. But yeah, no, I think it's a fantastic project. There was a little over 1,000 video clips that we took over a three-day period. And oops. And and basically, we just went, we just went through that for like the last few months, and we've been slowly putting out different pieces of content. And the ones that you've seen, those are kind of the lowest hanging fruits, the ones that are easily put together. And there's going to be some longer ones coming in the future.
Very good. Jay, anything else on this?
End of my report, but I think Commissioner Tyson has his hand up.
Yeah, I have a question for Jackson. Hey, Jackson, could you make their soundtrack a little more rockin? No, actually, I liked it. I liked it. I thought it fit.
Jay, I have a suggestion. Potentially, as we do the Shade of Fuel Break on Moody.
Yes.
Capture that and explain what it is and show the progress as a, as another thing to capture via video.
Yeah, okay. Taking a note. Shaded fuel breaks. Yeah, Jackson, we want to do a whole series of vegetation mitigation because that's so much of our tone going into the fire season. And then also, we have a strategic plan and encapsulating what that strategic plan is going to provide to the community as part of a video clip. So we've got all kinds of ideas for you. And what I'd like to have from the commission tonight is just not so much agree agreement, but just understanding that I'm going to move forward with that plan with you, put an agreement together and then come back to the commission.
All right, so we need to get a sense of the commission. Any any feedback, positive feedbacks? You, Joan, got her hand up, Joan?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit more about this later, but these videos are terrific. And Denise, you're a star.
Yes.
I think it's it's important when we look at the demographics of of Los Altos Hills that not only the younger folks really want the video, but those who are older and don't have a lot of capabilities for, you know, digging stuff out of a website and studying, etc., a video is a really quick and easy way to train them what they need to do. And it can also be leveraged for social media, which really helps our communications out. So thank you. I think it's a great idea. Totally behind it.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, positive or negative from commissioners, guidance?
No, Spring agrees. And Denise is a great host, by the way.
Reality TV star is born. All right, so I think I'm going to, I'm going to speak and anyone else disagree with me? I think we have a sense of the commission that to continue to move forward, Jay.
Yes, I will. I will use my president, my president's authority. I'm so sorry. I will use my general manager authority and go ahead and enter into that agreement and get the video productions going because we don't want to miss our spring goats.
Right.
And Jackson, I had to get special permission for you to fire, fly your drones. We're going to have Denise out there with you, keeping an eye on things. You're on me. Okay.
Great, thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
Is there any further follow-up from the public on this topic? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item 10, receive the Emergency Services Manager Report. Items 10A through B are the reports, Emergency Services Manager Gluehand, Insert Program Analysis BB, Analyst BB, please provide the reports.
So I will start out. Thank you, commissioners, my fellow staff members, presenters and the public that's in attendance tonight. Here's some of the topics that have been covered. I'm not going to be redundant as much as possible. So since we had a lot of good information from outside presenters, I'll kind of speed through here and cover. Victoria's got a bulk of the the manager report here. Again, monthly meetings, these are the regularly scheduled ones. One of the changes that happened this past month is the PIO or Public Information Officer Meeting was changed to from, it was initially when COVID started a weekly, then it went to biweekly, and now it's to a monthly meeting. So that's happening once a month, and it changed time to 11 o'clock. So that's going on. And again, a great way to get messaging information to the public and to the commissioners and our staff attending these meetings. It's the current trends that are happening through public health and down at OEM. Some additional meetings. So these are ones that are kind of changed depending on what's going on. Shaded Fuel Break Meetings, and like we've mentioned already, Moody Road is our next shaded fuel break project. And we call it Shaded Fuel Break and Evacuation Route Hardening because ultimately, as Jay said, out of the task force and has been our continuing message, we have a lot of work to do, but the majority of the work that we're doing is around life safety. So evacuation along Zone Haven will will help complement that, all these things tying together. And again, having Jackson come, Jackson come in and do some videographing of that to really explain what a shaded fuel break is. As you remember, we did one down on Page Mill, we hardened Page Mill Road, and that's pretty much completed up to 35. And that's going to tie in well with that Highway 35 Shaded Fuel Break and Evacuation Hardening that's happening across the county, multiple county jurisdictional lines. Some of that project, as Eugenia said, on Highway 35 is already underway in Santa Clara County, starting up here in the next month or so. The ongoing GIS, Eugenia also mentioned how important it is to get this information. It's a place to store our data. It's a place to develop a maps. We'll have a report out on a future meeting. It does incorporate into one of the strategic planning goals coming up in the future. Regional meetings have already mentioned Highway 35. The ongoing strategic plan meetings that we're having with individual commissioners. The Wildland Task Force, this is being developed as a biweekly meeting with Councilmember Leisha Schmidt. And again, thank you so much for her passion, her learning curve. She's really embraced the information and really moved forward and really becoming a great advocate, a collaborator for the district and the town. So I think we're going to get some really good jump off and collaboration going off together with that. San Jose State Workshop, again, great information. I think one of the key messages that General Manager Logan and I got out of that, we saw a lot of technical and research measurement metrics, forecasting tools. But one of the tools that's a little bit lacking has been the social science tool. And that was really brought up, the importance of the social science. When I say that, that's tying in. How does the public react to receiving messages? We can alert, we can draw models, but if the public doesn't understand, and I think this ties back so well to strategic plan goals that Commissioner Sherlock has, some of our branding and messaging, where do we get that sourcing? And again, Zone Haven, how do we evacuate people, get the message? Charlie didn't bring up, but they have a very great software format with Zone Haven around how to push public messaging. So that'll be rolled out as we have future meetings. So that's a a really great opportunity for the district to embrace education to the public about not just the evacuation, but what that means and how to be prepared and resilient. Because again, that's been the underlying message in our strategic plan is that self-reliant, resilient population of residents in Los Altos Hills. CWPP, great momentum too. On this is another strategic plan goal, and we met with representatives from County Fire. We got to have one of our first meetings with Chief Matheson on that, along with Chief Glass and some other members, Paige Russell's retired fire captain that's helping. We have been preparing our update for our Annex Four, which is kind of, when you look at the CWPP, it's a big planning document. And the Annex Four is specifically for Los Altos Hills. And that's kind of our planning, government document that ties in with our strategic plan, all our educational components and the operational programs that we're doing. Zone Haven Meeting, I had that with the North County partners and collaborators, so Stanford University, Palo Alto, Los Altos and Los Altos Hills. We had a meeting regarding the Zone Haven rollout and next stages. And we're going to invite town planners and representatives in some of the next meetings specifically for Los Altos Hills to work on getting those zones figured out completely and any special information, as Charlie had mentioned in his presentation, get all that incorporated into the Zone Haven formatting there. And then these ongoing meetings, shaded fuel breaks, that's, we're just getting scope finished, so I hope to present that in the next meeting. We're continuing with neighborhood evacuation planning. We have two or three neighborhoods, and I've asked special requests of some town residents that have involved the task force to help me get some traction on moving some more of those ahead. And then the Firewise Community Certification, we're still working on getting our first one up in Saddle Mountain going. So hopefully we'll get that. It's a, it's pretty close to being ready to go. We just need to get a little bit of management on board. Next slide, please. So I'm going to roll this over to Victoria, and she can tell you a little bit about some of the things that have, exciting things that have been going on in Team Cert. Victoria?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. It's been quite a busy month. And going to be some next busy months coming up as well. Just to give you kind of an overview. Our usual monthly meetings that I go to, our monthly CCLT Cert meetings, we're really working to collaborate together on trainings as a Cert Manager Group and Leadership Group for the county. Really excited to be looking at a web-based damage assessment tool that I'm hoping that we can somehow integrate into Zone Haven at some point, which, you know, cross your fingers that we can do that. I think that'd be really cool as well. I also go to the monthly PIO meetings that Denise goes to. We're still doing general meetings first Wednesday of the month. Third Wednesday of the month is our supervisor meetings and training sessions in between. We've now added on some Team Cert Board meetings. We now have a Team Cert Board, and I'm going to have my Team Cert SCC Ambassador talk to you in a couple of minutes about that. Also involved in the Wildfire Task Force meetings with Leisha Schmidt and Jay and Denise. Really, really, as Denise said, I want to echo that. Great collaboration with Lisa. She is is really kind of going for the education and brings up a lot of good points and really has been working with us on a lot of community outreach on wildfire and really enjoy those sessions. Also part of the ECC meeting. We're looking for some collaborative efforts with the town on doing maybe some activation drills, working with the town staff and also with the emergency communications group there. Initial meetings, meetings, I've been doing a lot of first account training. I think we're almost ready to roll that out. Red Cross Shelter Training, we did this last week, I'm sorry, this last month. We are now up to date with how the sheltering will look if we ever have to open up a foothall and in the COVID environment. We have, I'm going to show you the next slide, but we've changed our website a little bit, our LAH Cert website. Thanks to Annie Zhu. She's been doing a lot of good stuff with that. I'll show you what our version, what, I think it's 1.0. Roger could probably tell me how to say it, but I think it's version 1.0 user interface change that we've made. I'll show you a slide in a second on that. Coffee with Victoria. Nobody wants to talk to me on Mondays at 10 o'clock. I've been having coffee by myself. So we're going to change direction on that. I think some people, Mondays are a little hard for them to get to, so I'm going to be changing direction on that a little bit. I'm still doing a lot of leadership training webinars with the ICMA program, enjoying that, trying to, you know, really encourage our current certs to somehow get themselves motivated on our Zoom trainees to come to them, because I know they're getting a little tedious. Lots of planning meetings with Team Cert, really super busy with that. And then, you know, been kind of trying to keep our updates on our cert website as well. More amazing activities. I did meet with some, I think it was Shift A and C, discuss how Cert can kind of support the Monte Fire Captains. We're talking specifically about Silver Alert and some other areas. So hoping that we can kind of So hoping that we can kind of. Get some procedures done with the town. I know we've got a draft kind of going around right now. Hopefully have a better update next month on where we're at with that. We did the interviews for Teen Cert Board, I was busy with that at the end of March. And then we have launched our Teen Cert and Hybrid Academies online. We currently have last. Look, I think we have thirty four or thirty five adults and we have forty one teens. We have an interest of a hundred and eighteen still to try to recruit and get them these academies, so. That's one of our projects that we're looking at for the Teen Cert Board. Last, like I mentioned, our certain refresh trains were on shuttle front end medals for Red Cross last month. We also did some secure space and our continuing collaboration with Los Altos Cert. And our new April and May trains are going to be with disaster medical ops one and two with special presenters Terry and Mari Kearney. We're looking forward to that and we also have. A case study on triage with a Gilroy Fire Engineer, happens to be my husband. On the Gilroy shooting and how they used triage and that, so I know a lot of certs are really excited about that. For outreach activities in collaboration with Los Altos prepares, it's community preparedness month. So we have some different activities for our our Cert members and also for our public. We are having a stop the bleed teen version, I wanted to mention that on Saturday. Coming up, we also have the virtual emergency preparedness schema, youth preparedness council disasters. Don't wait presentation that will be happening on Sunday. Denise is going to be the. Subject matter expert for fire wildfire evacuation. So really excited to be doing that. We're going to help moderate. That as well. My big announcement is we're probably going to do our first in-person event. Yay. Yay, finally. Gosh, so I decided to make an all-day event and go out and we're going to have some fun. So we're going to have some skills practice sessions, we're going to limit those to about forty-five minutes for per ten people. We're going to go over some head-to-toe assessment, things like that, some skills that they've been taking for stop the bleed as well. And then we're going to backpack refresh everybody's stuff is kind of starting to get a little old with the first day stuff, so we're going to refresh that. And then we're also going to do a cert role exercise. We're working a lot on our communications between our recon teams and ops and trying to kind of. Solidify those roles a little better, have better understanding of how that flow is with communication. And we've also been registered to go to the Carpet Parade with the Kiwanis Club Los Altos. Not sure how that's going to work. Kind of excited to see what that's going to look like. But we are gathering preparations for that and I'll have some pictures at the next report. Just want to give you a little quick version, that is our user interface. We just sort of moved things over, some pictures, and we're going to be having another version two point oh. Probably the next three, except we're going to roll out as well, so I'm excited to announce that. Teen Cert update, I'm going to be having each month a newer member of the board come and present. This month, I'm still going to have Mahir Mishra, who is our Teen Cert Ambassador and Chair of the SEC Board. And he's going to kind of explain to you how I set the board up really quickly. So Mahir, are you there?
Yep.
Perfect, okay, you're on.
Okay, so I'm excited to present to you guys. It was fun doing it last time. So a quick update about the Teen Cert program is that we have two boards set up now. One is the Santa Clara County Board with the positions listed, you can see on the chart that Victoria has nicely done. And then we also have the Los Altos, Los Altos Hills Board. Which is basically, the way we structured it is that all the Los Altos, Los Altos Hills Board. Will be managing all of the Los Altos and Los Altos Hills residents that are participating in the program. And the reason why we have two boards now is because we're hoping in the future to expand to different cities. Like we might be creating a mountain view board soon in the next couple of months. And then the Santa Clara County Board will be managing the boards that will be managing the members. So that's kind of the structure we've set up and we held interviews and had an application process and selected. The board members through that. So we've actually, we recently met this past Sunday. To talk about the different goals and projects that we're going to be taking on. And so here's a list of the projects. Missions, as for the mission statement, we pretty much like have the idea of what we're going to write. It just needs to be like official and have to like write it. Actually, like write it. And then we also set up a yearly calendar, we're going to be meeting on Sundays on both boards. And then on, we are planning on reaching out to, just like from. Friends and people we know on that have showed interest in the program to ensure that they actually register for the course and go through that. And we already have, as Miss BB mentioned earlier, around forty people interested or forty people actually signed up and registered for the course. So we're hoping to increase that number to match the interest we've received. And we're also in the process of creating some communications channels and there are more goals. Listed and another big thing actually is that. We will be on the Our Town newspaper article. And so we are currently in the process of drafting out a article and we're going to be submitting that very soon.
All right, I believe that's the end of our report. Any questions or comments for our little emergency services group?
All right.
I am amazed, just as I was last month. Keep it up, this is incredible.
Yep.
But I wanted, I really want to thank Victoria, kind of a full circle. Jay remembers we were in a Los Altos Hills. Town Council meeting and Town Council Member Corrigan. Directed us to interface with the youth council and directly out of that. Because of COVID, that got canceled, went virtual this year, which we participated. And that's really where, you know, we. Kind of twofold, the resilient population, the youth are included in that and that was kind of a missing piece. So really appreciate Victoria's energy efforts. We hear all of the energies of the youth of Los Altos Hills that have embraced this. And additionally, we've brought along recruitment of certs. To adults, because you know, they see the kids doing it, the adults are coming in too. We are doing that virtually with the Utah model. And we hope by June, if things go, continue to go well, we'll be able to do. Our skills testing. So I really want to take that full circle and thank Victoria. For helping us complete that, the stop the bleed, all of those additional trainings, just really amazing to get. You know, the youth involved and, you know, their parents too. So thank you. And again, thank you for the support of the commission for doing that. End of my report, please, if you have any more comments or questions, thank you.
Great. Questions, Alan, you get your hand raised? Alan?
Yes, thank you. Captain Gluhan mentioned that she's working on updating the Annex Four. I would be interested in learning what she's doing with regards to that update. The principal problem that me and others have observed with Annex Four is is that the maps. In terms of the. Ratings of moderates and 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 high and so forth, don't make logical sense to us. Who are familiar with the actual. Conditions on the ground. It would seem to me the most appropriate and important thing to do would be to survey in detail. The Los Altos Hills District, to be sure those maps are up to date. So that that information can be loaded into the GIS system and then priorities can be assigned to. Addressing those various areas. Thank you.
Denise, can you answer that question?
George can answer that question. I'll just address that a little bit on fourteen A I, where we talked about the update to Annex Four.
Okay, so pause your question there, Alan, we'll get to it, and I, item fourteen, okay? All right, any other questions for Denise? Victoria or Teen Cert rep? I do want to make a comment that it's impressive that you've got that organization already built out in such a short period of time. That's not a small. To get the, you know, to move that quickly. Very impressive. There's no further public or council comments. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item. Eleven, which is the fire hydrant report. Item eleven A is the report, General Manager Logan, please provide the report.
Thank you, Board President Warren. Item eleven A, Friar and Loretta engineer consultant Jeff Tarantino. Will provide an update on the progress made and the next steps for the district parcel. And the hillside that was damaged on the district parcel by soil erosion due to a struck hydrant. Mr. Tarantino, are you still with us?
I am. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Great, thank you, General Manager Logan. Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for having me here. I just wanted to give a brief update on our progress. At repairing the slope at, on the district parcel. So if the commissioners will recall. A little over a year ago, Fire Hydrant was struck. And the water released from the hydrant strike until the water was turned off caused erosion on an existing slope. On the district parcel. F and L developed a set of construction drawings. To solicit bids, we also utilize those drawings to secure, to to approach the town to secure grading permit in accordance with the town's. Grading policy. The town has required that we perform an additional geotechnical investigation. So we have completed the fieldwork about two weeks ago. We performed a single boring on the parcel. The purpose of the boring is to respond to some questions from the town about the stability of the underlying soils. And so those, the soil borings will allow us to to resolve those questions and if necessary, update the plans. We will be resubmitting our plans with the geotechnical information to the town in approximately two weeks. We anticipate the town will require a couple of weeks to to review and and we hope that once the town reviews the. Geotechnical information, including any planned updates that may be required. Will be able to engage the contractor to complete the repairs. The repairs themselves are. Projected to to require, you know, about two weeks worth of work. And so we're we're ready, the contractor's still on board, we're ready to to implement those repairs as soon as we receive the grading permit from the town. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the slope repair.
Any questions from the commission? Any questions from the public? One question, Jeff, what's your background this this month?
This time I chose a groundwater groundwater well treatment project that. In the city of East Palo Alto was built to provide emergency water supply in the event of disruption to their primary water source.
Very interesting, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
I I just wanted to kind of conclude, thank Mr. Tarantino for his fine work. Over this year on the Horseshoe Lane hillside erosion to the district parcel. And in addition, before the boring began, which was, I think, April ninth. The district sent a good letter, a neighbor letter to the neighbors within five hundred feet radius of the parcel. Just to let them know that the boring was going to take place, not to alarm anyone. And I think that all went very smoothly because I heard nothing from the neighbors, so I'm assuming we didn't disrupt anyone's life with that activity. There'll be more activity, so I thought it best to start off on a good foot with the neighbors surrounding the the district parcel. So thank you, that's the end of my comments. On eleven A. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right. Any question from the commission? Any from the public? All right, then we'll now move to items eleven B and C. General Manager Logan, please introduce the items.
Yes, thank you.
B and C.
Yes, eleven B, and I hope all the commissioners have an opportunity to read the four-page memorandum report. It was written, I, what I felt I needed to do was pull it together for the new commissioners and as a refresher to all ongoing commissioners. Because as I've written reports about our hydrants, they've all been kind of one-off reports about this hydrant or that. And so this memorandum report really encompasses the the full progress of what's been occurring with our hydrant water system program. And that is intended to manage the five hundred and forty district hydrants and their related infrastructure. And it's the five hundred hydrants that belong, along with the info, the related infrastructure to the district. This recommendation is to approve the invitation to bid and authorize solicitation of bids for an on-call contractor. To repair and replace damaged hydrants in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for the fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two year. About from July twenty-one to June twenty-two. And then to direct staff to present a selection of the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. At a future board meeting and hopefully this will be, we will be able to conclude this invitation to bid activity by June fifteenth meeting. The memo provides background and it explains how the district became the agency. That owns and is responsible for the five hundred and forty hydrants with that lie within the Persima Hills Water District. There are two agreements between the board of supervisors and the board was acting on behalf of the. Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Persima Hills. Those two documents are attached. And I'll just summarize the documents for you. The district is fully responsible and liable for any mishaps of the hydrants. Not caused by another party such as a known driver striking a hydrant or by hydrant disrepair. With that liability and responsibility, the Board of Commissioners authorized retention of engineering consultant services from Friar and Loretta. To inspect hydrants and environmental damage. If a hydrant is struck or hydrants are relocated. Or the infrastructure fails, F and L inspects and manages the repair. F and L develops project plans, coordinates with Persima Hills, the towns for CIP projects, develops. Locations and GIS mapping and helps with hydrant information that can be stored and updated. F and L is now developing policies and procedures and SOPs for hydrant water systems. So the attachments to the memos reflect all these previous actions taken by the Board of Commissioners. And one that comes to mind is the TAFE Elena CIP project, and that demonstrates the attention to detail. Of the project to verify the expenditures charged to us by Persima Hills. Map and verify placements of the hydrants and to verify the hydrants were located according to the construction plans. So Friar and Loretta, F and L, Jeff Tarantino and his crew did all of that work. Pre-construction and post-construction sidewalks with the district staff, engineers, central fire, all occurred. And the same SOP, standard operating procedures will occur with the Concepcion Fremont CIP project. And that is scheduled for twenty twenty-two. In addition, in the January, February, March and the April reports to the. County Committees, F G O C and Hewlett. Hydrant activities and all these expenditures are presented to those committees. Expenditures for Persima Hills Water District are reviewed by the management audit team to ensure the district's compliance with recommendation one dot one. The district has divide, the district has also developed a hydrant claim and recovery of damages administrative process. And County Council and County Risk Management assists the district on difficult claims that we need special assistance with. And so this, this discussion I'm having with you now in the memorandum demonstrates that the delivery. Is a solid business model to implement the best practices to manage the district hydrant system as well underway. This process has required extensive attention to developing a framework for the district hydrant system. The attachments demonstrate the extensive work and approval by the Board of Commissioners over the period of a year. It's noted that procurement of contract services for hydrant repairs must comply. With Santa Clara County procurement processes and procedures. And must also comply with California Public Contract Code applicant, applicable to the fire district. District staff cannot pick up a phone and simply arrange for a contractor to come out and provide hydrant services. And then as you can see from item eleven C. It's a seventy-nine page solicitation to bid document that seeks approval. From the Board of Commissioners tonight to fulfill the procurement requirements and to select the lowest bidder. Which is responsive and responsible to provide service as an all call, as an on-call contractor. Thus, in event of a hydrant strike, the on-call contractor is properly vetted and able to quickly respond to get the hydrant repaired and functioning. This is particularly important with fire season advancing. The complexities and various requirements managing the district hydrant water system, the ongoing requirements under the nineteen eighty agreement. And the accountability to the County of Santa Clara. And the public requires that the hydrant systems are best managed internally by the district. With all these factors, the district is on a path of progress and successful stewardship of the important district asset. I recommend board approval of the invitation to bid for the on-call contractor. And a report back to the Board of Commissioners with a recommendation for the selection of the contractor at a future meeting, hopefully in June. So that's the end of my report, but happy to answer any questions. I think this is an opportunity. For discussion and so thank you for, and happy to answer questions.
Great, it looks like Terry, you've got a question?
Um, yeah, I've got a couple, just background questions, Jay. So.
Sure.
Does Persima Hill consider the district's hydrants part of their system?
Hmm, good question. Then thank you for raising that. No, speaking for them. Hmm, good question. Then thank you for raising that. No, speaking for them, I don't think they do. Prisma Hills put in the water mains and under the agreement between the Board of Supervisors with Prisma Hills. Prisma Hills gave the district permission to attach our hydrant system to their water mains. So they're separate and discreet and very different. I've talked with Jubin Pakpour, who's the consulting engineer for Prisma Hills. And he made it very clear in his demonstration that this main belongs to Prisma Hills. And oh, by the way, these laterals that hook up belong to from this point forward belong then to the 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 district. So in that, there are very different, very different callings, I think, between the two agencies. Because Prisma Hills is responsible for delivering drinking water to the community. We're responsible by that hookup. Of using that water and providing it for fire suppression for life and property safety. So thank you. That's a helpful question.
Thanks. That 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 helps. Does Purismo have some sort of expertise regarding fire hydrants? That the district doesn't?
So I've talked with them in the past. When I first came on, I didn't know a lot about the hydrant system. And then Denise coming on helped me also. We started having hydrant strikes. And when we did, Denise, as you recall, we went to Prisma Hills and asked the general manager at the time, hey, can you take this on for us? And the general manager very definitely said, no, that's not an interest that's not in our skill set to do. What we will do is we'll cap off the hydrant because we don't want to lose our drinking water. And we'll pick the hydrant up and put it in a safe and secure place. And the reason they do that was interesting to me is because they don't want the hydrant tainted with any kind of bacteria. They want to keep it in a secure place. So when the hydrant goes back on, it doesn't have bacteria that leaches into their drinking water system. So they're very drinking water focused. And so that's the extent of what they would do. Now, what they told me, and I think Commissioner Tyson probably would know better because you're one of the historians here. But in in the day when a hydrant was struck before the business model we're using now. The the fire consultant would simply pick up the phone, call a contractor, and the contractor would come out, not related to Prisma Hills. But would then put the hydrant back on. That's not acceptable practice now. We can't do that. Working with the county and nor would I ever recommend that at this point in time with the liability that that goes along with the with the hydrants. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's that's great. Thank you. That helps a lot. And one final question, is there, has anyone estimated the value of this? What I assume is a district asset?
Yeah, it's a very important asset. And I think I'll just, Corey, do you recall that? Because if you don't have the value of the asset, I think I recall it offhand. It's about ten million dollars value to the district in this asset. So obviously, a very important asset to the County of Santa Clara. Who serves as the director of the fire district to the and and gives the authority to the Board of Commissioners to care for this very important. And highly liable and valuable asset. So if you consider a couple percentage of that amount. You know, we're way below a couple of percent of maintaining this ten million dollar asset. So, you know, thank you also for that question.
Thanks, that helps.
Sure, sure. I I think what's important is I really do feel we've got a good model put together. I could ask Sarah to talk about all she's done in risk management to put the claims forward. Chris Chellidon's been fantastic in helping us with that. But there's no one who has a better interest in reclaiming the damages when a hydrant strike occurs than the district. There's no one who has a better knowledge or background or concern and having those hydrants working well for fire suppression than the district. And that's in our core. That's our core functionality. So that's why I'm pretty passionate about this because I think we've developed a good process here.
Great. Any other questions from Commissioners?
Let me just add an added comment because I I do want to address, I I. We received a letter from Alan Epstein in effect saying that we shouldn't be managing this. We should hand it to Prisma Hills. And Alan, I know you didn't raise your hand. You didn't wish to speak. I don't mean to call you out in any way, but I I want you to know that I read your letter. And I believe the two other letters that you've sent us in the past, this is clearly important. That you understood, at least speaking for myself, I understood your arguments and I disagreed with them. So it's not a lack of attention or or under being under anybody's sway. My thoughtful analysis is we're the right people to manage this. And just for everybody else in this room, I would like to raise a point that we didn't say before. And that is, the goal of the water for fire hydrants is, in a sense, diametrically opposed. To pure clean drinking water. And so the goal of pure clean drinking water is to have as small a pipe. As little inventory, as small a tank, as high a velocity to minimize microbial growth in a piping system. Whereas in the fire suppression, we want big pipes for big flow and big tanks so we can have those things. You might also say a water system wants to have as few connections as possible. In other words, as few fire hydrants and as few laterals as possible. Our our goal is different. We want more fire hydrants in appropriately spaced. And so I'm just going to say. I believe that this is the proper answer for us. It may not be a typical one for others. But given the hand we're dealt, we've got it. Let's manage it. I think we are managing it. I think we're doing the residents the best best service and we're the right people to do it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the Commission? I just want to say, you know, to the staff on this one, thank you for pulling this together. It was a lot of legwork to bring this agreement. To put it together. So we put it out to bed. I think this is strategically important for the district. This is, as I've said earlier to this evening. This is an important step as we mature and grow the organization to have to put in place an on-call contractor. That meets all of our requirements as a public, as part of Santa Clara County. To do this, you know, and comply with all the rules and regulations, not, you know, health, safety, legal procurement. And so this is, you know, an important step. Thank you to the staff for pulling this together. No further commission questions. We'll go to the public. And Alan, I see you've got your hand raised. I'll turn it over to you, Alan.
Thank you very much for taking up the topic. I appreciate your having a discussion about it. My comments in the past have been that. There just hasn't been any discussion amongst the Commissioners. So I was unable to understand. What the Commissioner is thinking who are about this matter. Appreciate your taking the time to discuss it and thanks so much for all you do.
Thank you, Alan. Anything further? All right. No, any other public comments? Seeing none. All right. So thank you, General Manager Logan, District Council, Consulting Engineer Tarantino. If there's no further questions from the Commission or the public, what we'll do now is I'll now entertain a motion to adopt item eleven C. And if you should move. Tyson moves.
Sherlock seconds.
Thank you, Joan. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Hearing none. Is there any public comment on eleven C? Hearing and seeing none. Then if there's no further discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That concludes eleven, item eleven and eleven C. We'll now move to item twelve, which is the Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Report. Item twelve A is the update. Emergency Services Manager Gluhan, please provide, introduce the item.
Yeah, so on for for twelve, we've covered most of it and there's not a lot of new news and I really want to get to our strategic plan down at the bottom. So I'm going to go very quickly. This is a reminder tomorrow evening, County Fire is presenting the Ready, Set, Go. This was pushed out on social media channels also again from the district for the reminder. And the first two are ready, set, go. And then you can see the other subjects that are and topics that are covered on additional dates through the mid portion of May. So that is on our social media or it's connected on our website. And again, great way for the community to get out. And get some information. Ready, Set, Go is absolutely integrated into everything that we're doing. Because of the collaborative efforts between the town, the fire district and Santa Clara County Fire. So I just wanted to do that on the fuel reduction. I already mentioned the shaded fuel break. That's ongoing. We have a lot of other little projects that are in the works that will let you know in the future that are coming on around that on both a. Community level and a residential level. Moving on to H I Zs. I kind of went out of order there, sorry. H I Zs, we are getting back because we're in the orange. There are being done. Again, the impact of COVID caused a delay. Residents understand that it's a it's a great asset that they receive in service and they're willing to wait to have those done. And again, they get that comprehensive report and it's the education piece that we are adding that gives value to the residential. Utilizing chipping programs, fuel reduction, we've talked about defensible space, property hygiene, all those things tied together. And then the goats, we don't have a date yet. We are going to interface and get the approvals to to do some. Some additional coverage in videographing both zone, I'm sorry, both drone and with some. More footage of what the goats are doing and some mapping on where they're going. We are interfacing with residents that want them to not be on their property. So we are working with that. As soon as we find out, we'll give an update when the goat hers will be here. And just a last little note that we've been working on the last couple of days, the Los Altos Town is doing an Earth Day on Thursday. We've submitted the flyer that you just saw and a couple of other of the flyers that we have on our website. As part of the Earth Day posting. So it's a great opportunity again to tie together something that's recognized as a a plus. But also, what's the management of things around Earth Day? What does that look like in responsibility with wildfire? Again, that resiliency component. That's the end of my report and thank you if there's any questions. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion from the Commissions? Hearing none. Is there any public comment? Thank you. We'll now move to item thirteen, Financial Consultant Report and the District Clerk Report. Item thirteen A is the adoption of the FY twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two final budget. Financial Consultant and District Clerk Vargas, please present the item.
Right, so item thirteen A is the final budget for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And there's been no change on that since the one that was presented at last month's meeting. So really, unless there's any further discussion, this has already been turned in to the County. Office of Budget Analysis and a little late for changes now. So I just am looking for a motion to adopt this formally as our final budget.
And and the but and the budget narrative, correct? Are we going to do that to two items? We're going to do that in two items?
Yeah, I think we're doing two separate motions, so.
Okay. Yeah, so the the first motion we're going to do here is to vote, adopt eleven A, which is the the final budget. The thirteen A, thank you. All right, any questions before we actually ask for a motion? All right. Thank you. So what I need is a motion to adopt eleven A, which is the FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Final budget. Need a motion, please? Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Kavita. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. If there's no further discussion, we'll now vote on eleven A. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call vote.
President Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Right, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, we'll now move to item thirteen B, which is the adoption of the FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget narrative. Financial Consultant District Clerk Vargas, please present the item.
Okay, and in your packet is the final budget narrative. That had been presented to you at the February meeting, kind of in its draft version. This final version, I have updated all of the number graphs, you know, percentage change to match the final budget. And then also page twenty, which is sort of, it's showing the cash flow by month. That I had not completed before. And so now all the monthly figures have been figured out. It was included as an attachment in thirteen A, showing by month what the spending would be. So now that is really the only big changes that have been made. And I haven't heard any. Feedback as far as additional errors or typos. So what I'm looking for tonight is a. Motion to approve this for publication to the public.
Very good. Thank you, District Clerk Vargas. Are there any clarifying questions from the Commission? On the budget narrative? All right, seeing none, I will now entertain a motion for thirteen B, which is the budget narrative.
I move that we approve thirteen B, the budget narrative.
Thank you, Joan. Need a second?
Three seconds.
Thank you, Roger. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any further discussion from the Commission?
I'd like to make a comment that, you know, as much as we focus on the numbers of the budget and having that work to the county and so forth. The budget narrative, really, the amount of information and work that goes into that is unbelievable. I encourage anyone to spend the time. It's always, I'm always amazed what I learn by reading through it. I shouldn't admit that, actually. But it really is an impressive document and not one that we should that should go by without thanking Corey for the effort that went into it.
Right. It's a very important document. Any comments or questions from the public? All right, seeing and hearing none. There's no further discussion. We will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Great, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great. We'll now move to item thirteen C, an update on the county's budget workshop and public hearing process. Financial Consultant Vargas, please provide the update.
Okay, and so this Thursday, April twenty-second, there will be the Hewlett meeting at ten o'clock AM. And our final budget is on their consent calendar, agenda item number eight. So they will be reviewing it then. And then April twenty-third is when the recommended budget will be finalized. We have the budget workshops coming up, May tenth, eleventh, twelfth. They are, my contact at Oba said, most likely we will be at the meeting on the twelfth, May twelfth at one thirty PM. Is when our, we will, Jay and myself will present the budget to the Board of Commissioners. And then June fourteenth, fifteenth, and seventeenth is the budget hearing. And that is when the final budget is adopted by the Board of Commissioners. We will most likely, according to our our contact, be have the hearing on the fifteenth. And that meeting starts at one thirty. The seventeenth is closed session and that's where the Board of Commissioners finalize the budget. So that's my updates on that.
Great, thank you, Corey. Is there any discussion from the Commission on the budget workshop process? Any comments or questions from the public? All right, hearing none. We'll now move to item fourteen, which is the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two strategic plan goals. Items fourteen are the goals, are the reports on goals one and five. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott, please introduce the item.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Commissioners, Chief Glass, staff, members of the public. In your agenda packet, staff report on item fourteen provides a summary of the strategic plan process. We have six strategic goals. Each of those have a number of objectives. And Commissioners are aligned with each goal. And to build upon the comments that President Warren made at the very start of this meeting. The the Commissioners are highly engaged on these goals and they're doing research. They're talking with a variety of stakeholders. They're talking with a variety of stakeholders. They're looking at planning and thinking about how to move forward on the various components of their goals. So we're all getting started and headed down the path. And tonight we will have two presentations on two goals. And after those presentations, I'll give you a very brief summary on the next steps. So to begin, we will hear first about strategic goal number one from Commissioner Tyson. This goal is the update of the Community Wildfire Protection Program Annex Four and the addendum for residents, which is sort of the Cliff Notes. And this goal is tracking forward quickly as it serves as the foundation for district programs and decisions. Commission Ty, Commissioner Tyson is very familiar with this document as he assisted in preparing the current version of Annex Four, which was adopted in June of twenty nineteen. Additionally, Commissioner Tyson is a homegrown commissioner and is well versed in the unique characteristics of this area and the resulting risks of wildfire danger. The benefit of Annex Four is that while it is a part of the countywide CWPP, Annex Four speaks directly to the unique local, social and ecological characteristics of our area. I'm pleased to turn over the Zoom microphone to Commissioner Tyson.
Well, thank you very much, Marcy, and homegrown, really. Well, I'll take it. I'll take it. It could have been, it could be worse, right? Anyway, thank you very much. And by the way, I was trying to see how I could share my screen so I could show the the wild community, wildfire community resilience document. And last I knew, I wasn't still able to do that.
Oh, now I can. Yep, I was gonna say you're a co-host. You should be good to go.
That's good. Great, thanks. Let me, let me close that.
And Victoria, can I share my screen later on? You're also a co-host status right now, too. Great, thanks.
Okay, all right. So I think you you got a good intro from from that. We we initiated the Community Wildfire Protection Plan in twenty nineteen, as you just heard. And this is a portion of what goes is goes into the county. It's quite a detailed document. But what it does is it documents the wildfire risk and then what we can do to mitigate it. And so, you know, we can't control weather, we can't control drought, but we can influence things such as our vegetation, our education, improving the evacuation routes, the defensible space and making our homes more resilient. You've already heard a lot of those things tonight. And so I think you'll find that this this nests in with our overall. Okay, so at this point, let me go ahead and just show the wildfire here. Let me go ahead and and share the wildfire resilience, community resilience. And this should look very familiar because I noticed it also appears in the budget narrative. And so the thing that we just recently approved and what it does is it speaks to the fact that we have all of these programs. I want to give a shout out to Denise and to Victoria, who've been working on this and creating this. You'll see some familiar things here on the left side. You'll see our prevention and protection programs, which talks about our outreach, getting the word out and the communication, the wildfire neighborhood programs, neighborhood workshops. And then public alert and warning, once something happens, how how straightforward is it, is the communication? I really liked what I heard earlier from the Zone Haven people and their ability to model and create something that was that was real time, linking in with our cert activities, alternate evacuation relocation routes, too. And then off to the right, you'll see things about the integrated hazardous fuel reduction program and some familiar things about vegetation management. You even see a nice picture of our goats here and some of the other efforts that are underway. In the middle of this chart, you'll see some potential future programs. And this is a, this is a working document. We're gonna expand that and as we go, as we learn. And so I think we're seeing a lot of great things here tonight. I'm gonna stop sharing, just go back to looking a little bit about my text. I think one of the key messages is that this document was prepared originally in June of twenty nineteen and pretty soon it'll be two years from then. We keep learning since then. And we've learned sometimes from fires and sometimes hopefully we learn from what happens elsewhere. Okay, and so what I have been doing along with district staff is taking the previous draft and marking it up and then we're consolidating our documents. And then just this last week, we met with Chief Glass and then Chief Matheson, too, and to get some coordination with Central Fire where they can really help us is the point that member Epstein mentioned earlier, is let's update our maps, make sure they're current. And then that's also make sure that we got the correct regulatory references as we as we put them into the document to make sure they're current for where we are. Then we've got other experts, too, that we can tap into, such as the Fire Research Group at UC Berkeley and that San Jose State as well. So we expect to bring an updated version of the Annex Four to the commission around the end of this fiscal year, which will be, say, June-ish. And then once it's adopted, we'll add the addendum. The addendum has a history. You know, this document actually is a little bit dry and very detailed. And so we've got an annex that we'll also update. We call that the Cliff Notes. And actually, Captain Gluhin, who drafted this for us a couple of years ago, it's really helpful and it's very readable and we're gonna update that and make sure this goes along with this so that it's accessible to regular people and that they'll learn from that. And so this is a critical foundation document and it's gonna help us as we outreach to other agencies such as LAFCO and the county fire study that are coming up. And I think that's gonna help us show that we're relying on fire science, we're developing resiliency and that we're our goal is community protection and that's the direction we're headed. So with that, I think I'll stop and then see, Marcy, if I left anything important out or if anybody has any questions for me.
That's excellent. Thank you.
I got a lot of help from Marcy, though, I gotta say. Normally, I don't know what to say, but today I got some help from Marcy.
It's all good. Excellent, excellent input. And thank you so much for all of your work so far and continuing efforts. Again, partnering with with Central Fire and other experts as we move forward. So if there are no other comments or questions, next.
Our question from the public, from Alan.
Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
Thank you very much. Maybe if it's all right with the president, maybe Chief Glass could explain how the fire department is going to help update the maps, what sort of approach or technology or personnel or science that they're going to use to try and improve the accuracy of the maps. Thank you very much.
Chief Glass, are you able to answer that question?
Yes, President, I'll give you an update on what's been going on with our mapping and our GIS. And at some point, you know, that connection will be made to the hills and I see Captain Gluhin is shaking her head. But recently, the county embarked on a on a LiDAR fine scale mapping project throughout the county. This was a multimillion dollar project in which county fire participated and for lack of a better term, contributed resources and funds to support the fine scale mapping of fuels and topography within Central Fire District sphere of influence to include the Los Altos Hills County Fire District as our response area. And so that data we have recently received and have been processing, how to integrate that into our CWPP, not just for Annex Four, but for Annex One and several of the other annexes in which Central Fire is a participant. So I look forward to being able to share that data when it's available with the hills fire district. And again, I think you all have the contacts. I know General Manager Logan and Captain Gluhin do. Peter Norton, our GIS specialist, is very helpful and we will make that information available when when it's ready.
All right. Thank you, Chief Glass. Any other questions from the public? Thank you, George. I think we can go on to item goal five now.
Very good. Moving on. Next, for strategic goal number five, I am pleased to introduce Commissioner Sherlock, who is another homegrown commissioner. And while I say that, I will say that all of the commissioners have expertise in this area. They're out there hiking the trails. They are hiking to the vacant lot, we learned, and are interacting with residents on the pathways and talking to people in grocery stores. So we are fortunate to benefit from Commissioner Sherlock's expertise and talent in messaging and communications as that is a core element of strategic goal number five, which addresses communication, education, building programs of outreach as well as other community services and regional benefits. And we heard from both presentations earlier tonight that messaging is critical on these on these topics. And I will also add that Commissioner Sherlock is available to collaborate with all of the other commissioners on communication strategies for their goals as they move forward. So with that, I'm pleased to turn over the Zoom microphone to Commissioner Sherlock.
Great, thanks, Marcy. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for saving the best for last. I appreciate that. The end of their evening. As the end, I'll look forward to working with Commissioner Tyson and communicating out the update of the CWPP to residents as soon as he's ready for that. And I did notice that was one of his objectives was communicating out. So we'll definitely work on that together. I'll look forward to to getting together with you on that, George. So plant strategic plan goal number five. This is to deliver community services that support emergency response and build programs of outreach, communication, education and regional benefits. So the first thing we wanted to look at here was what we needed to look at for communications out because it doesn't help to build the programs if we don't get the word out. And the first vehicle that we wanted to evaluate was our website. So that's what I'm gonna talk about this evening. And I'll run through it pretty quickly because it's late. But I just wanted to know that I'm happy to meet with anybody one on one if you'd like to give additional input into the changes that we're looking at making. And I'm assuming Jay, that's within the within the rules. So if you could go to the next slide, please, Marcy. So the the goals for revising the website were around simplifying the site in general, finding a way to get easier access to the most important information and making media choices. We know how much we do in text versus video, finding that video is such a wonderful way to explain what we do and train people in what they need to do. And then to communicate to our audience in terminology that they understand. I think we often get caught up in what we want to call a program or what, you know, even hardening of what what that means and maybe the residents don't know what that means. So if they come to the website, we want to make sure that we're using audience friendly communication. And then to deliver direct access to the most desired information in that easiest way possible. If you could go to the next slide, please. So we wanted to look at data and use that data to make the decisions, to make the revisions. And you may have seen this at a prior meeting, but we wanted to look at the last year to see what had happened on the website and what kind of participation we had. And obviously, you can see the big spike around August, September with everything that was going on in our area, not only wildfires, but also PG&E limitations. And and it's interesting also to see how low participation was until that happened and how much higher the participation has been following that date. So people are paying more attention. They are more concerned and they are coming to the site more often. Of the number of users, it was eleven thousand almost users. And then if you see the page views, forty five thousand page views, that's pretty good. However, if you look at the bounce rate down there at the bottom, you'll see that fifty seven percent are coming to the site but not clicking anywhere. And unless you have a site that has all the info info on that homepage, you know they need to go deeper to get the information they need to actually get to qualify, quality information. Next slide, please. So we went and looked at where have they been going. And the data showed us that the two main areas they go to are for the Governance Commission meetings. So either to look at, to look at what's coming or what just happened. And then for chipping, the chipping program is a big, big draw. From there, it falls off a little bit into the emergency public, the the power shut offs that were happening, the contact us. And then again, the brush chipping program through another avenue there. So we thought, well, if that makes, if if that's true, how do we make sure that those have a real high presence when you get to the website, if that's where people want to go? Next slide, please. And then we also looked at the demographics of Los Altos Hills. The the town was great about sharing some of the information from the census. And we got this on the from the American Community Survey, which is attached to the census because we wanted to see how much do we need to simplify the interface? What is, what are the age groups that are coming to the site? What are the 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 age groups in the town itself? What kind of languages do they speak? Are they, you know, is it all English speaking, you know, what, which we figured it wasn't? And it was interesting to see that we do still have plenty of folks that are, you know, sixty and sixty five and over. And, you know, they may not be as web savvy or spend much time on computers. Some of the younger groups and the median age overall is fifty one, which is a pretty good sign for utilizing a website. And then in terms of languages, sixty three percent speak only English, but look at this, thirty six percent speak another language. Now, they might, we don't know how fluent they are because we don't have numbers on that. But it's important to pay attention to how they need to get information. So some of the the groups that that need to be communicated into a video or to be able to see examples of how you do something, this could be really effective for them moving forward. Next slide, please. Oh, I also want to just do a shout out for Sarah because she pulled together all those analytics for us and did a terrific job. Thank you, Sarah. Feel free to jump in if you want to add any information. So if you look at our current site, it's got a lot of information and you have to dig pretty deep to get to, you know, what you want, where we see the people want to go. And so we wanted to take that and simplify it for residents. The main things that they want to know about, the main things also that we want them to know about. And then you'll see the action over here on the right. We wanted to simplify what we want them to take action on and again, use language, not just saying, you know, use your okay card, but let us know that you're okay. They click through to that. They find out about their okay card and what it means. If you look up in the upper banner, we moved the search so it was easier to find. We also made it possible to get to the videos straight off the banner. And what we'll probably do is list the most current video for their attention. And then they can go to the video gallery for anything else that they want to learn. We'll also make sure that when we list a program, if there's a video about it, it will be within that program there. So we're we're still further simplifying right now. We're getting pretty close. But if anybody wants to, you know, get tighter into the info and talk to me more about it before we go to final, happy to do that with you. If you go to the next slide, please, Marcy. This shows how we also simplified the structure. We found some repetitive links, some areas that weren't being utilized at all. We didn't take anything out necessarily. We just simplified and tried to put it in a way that people could get to in an easier way and didn't really put a lot of the text heavy information upfront. And I think that's probably the last of it. Is there one more slide? Just Q and A? Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the staff because it was great working with with Sarah and and Jay on this and you, Marcy. Definitely a collaboration. And and again, Sarah really pulled together a lot of the info for us. So let me know if you have questions, any input for us, or if you'd like to get some more info offline.
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I think probably what we need is a little guidance to the commissioners as they exchange information. And so, you know, Joan, you kind of raised the issue about how the commissioners can get information to you if they have ideas or if they have a need. I would suggest they go through Marcy and then Marcy can kind of accumulate the information just so we're very compliant with any kind of public access rules. And that would be my thought. So if all the, for example, George, if you want to to get information about how to utilize Joan's skills for communication outreach for CWPP, I would just suggest, you know, using Marcy as the point person for all of that communication. So we don't develop any kind of a wheel and spoke kind of conversation between commissioners.
Sounds good.
Yes, okay.
Great.
Okay, one last little thing on that. You know, we're gonna be looking next at at social media and developing more active editorial calendars so we can plan out a little further. And then as people have different events that they want to talk about, we'll know about them in advance. And it was interesting that Eugenia brought up messaging, as you mentioned, Marcy, this evening because it is time for us to look at our messaging and how we're getting the word out. And then eventually, we would like to do a redesign of the site that's just a little bit a little bit better. But for right now, these are the changes that we can make in house. Sarah is actually doing the work herself along with Justin, who does the admin work. And so I think that we've we've really kept the cost down for now. But eventually, we'd like to look at a little bit better site and put some funds behind that.
Joan, you might also mention how you moved the icons for the social media up to the left margin of the page.
Oh, sure. So the social media icons prior were down at the bottom of the page, so people had to scroll down. And by making the page shorter and bringing the icons up to the top, it's more possible that they'll click on it and get more involved. Yes. Anything else to add? Are we good?
Anything else from commissioners? Okay, thank you, Joan. Thank you, Marcy.
Okay, great. So moving forward, at the May commission meeting, we'll have two more updates on strategic goals with the final two goals presenting at the June meeting. And that will cover all of our goals at that time. And so with that, that concludes our presentation on the strategic plan.
Great. Thank you, Marcy. Thank you, Joan. Thank you, George. Any discussion from the commissioners? Is there any further public comments on these? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to commission member reports. Item fifteen. Do commissioners or staff have any additional topics you'd like to add as a future agenda item? Anything from commissioners or staff? All right, seeing none, that will close out item fifteen. Is there any public comment on the item fifteen? Seeing none. All right, well, now move.
Alice.
Alan, all right, sorry, moving a little too fast. Alan, go ahead, please.
I would just like to remind you about my comment during the public session to see if you could place on the agenda the Fire District help funding the undergrounding project. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. All right, nothing further from the public. We will now, we'll now move to adjournment. This concludes the April twentieth, twenty twenty one regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting adjourns at nine fifty four PM. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom, May eighteenth, twenty twenty one, at seven PM. Sir, General Analyst BB, please stop the recording.